Good evening, Holliston. Welcome to the August 31 Select Board meeting. This evening, we have a relatively full agenda, so we will not delay our first order of business is to welcome our friends on the Governance Committee, who will be joining us virtually. They will be with us from 7:00 PM to approximately 7:30 PM, and then carrying on with their scheduled meeting. Sam, good evening. How are you, sir?
Good. Good. I think we need to, for the virtual, we need to go through the ritual first.
I will allow you to make your announcements, sir. Go right ahead.
Okay. So pursuant to the Governor's orders, pending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Paragraph 20, as well as Select Boards or emergency order dated 3/16/2020, they will be using remote participation for this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and will be booked into the town's webpage within 24 hours, and according to the Governor's emergency action requirement of keeping public informed actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time throughout the meeting, and that includes the members of our committee. So just going through the roll calls. So I'm going to be a little more formal this time, since we're with the Select Boards, so I'll say Mr. [inaudible]. Okay. Mr. LeBeau.
Present.
Ms. Lingam. All right, we'll come back to her. Mr. McKetchney. Scott, you're muted. Here we go. Present. Okay. And Mr. Tyler, present. So we have a call.
Excellent. Thanks for joining us all. Prior to the meeting, the Governance Committee submitted to the Select Board a host of questions that I thought we'd go through this evening and provide feedback for your benefit and the benefit of your committee, Sam. And following the discussion points around those questions, we could discuss next steps that your committee is taking in preparation for the special town meeting this fall. Does that sound good?
Yes, but I think we were going, our agenda has us talking to you about what we decided in our meeting to be our first order of business in terms of issues to address with bylaw changes. So we can do that pretty quickly.
Go right ahead, Sam. And I might add, you're cutting out a little bit. I don't know if you've got a problem with your microphone, but just be advised, listening is a little bit difficult right now. Anyways, go right ahead. You're on.
Okay. Well, I'll make it quick, and that is that we did notice in looking at other towns, many of which had sections in their charters with bylaws, finance, and fiscal procedures, which really brought together one article of the various steps in the budget process. We noticed that Holliston was totally devoid of this kind of a section or any information about the process. We thought we would, based on what we've seen in other towns, basically start with that as a process to, for, I guess, our first task during our tenure as the Governance Committee, to really begin that process. And that's the reason for the question, so that if we're going to look at and see if we can make any recommendations regarding the current budget process and Holliston to understand that process. And so we are, we want to start with you, the Select Board, and go through the questions. And then next Tuesday, we will also sit down with the financial officers of the treasurer, collector, accountant, and principal.
Assessor.
Assessor, thanks. And go through the process, and then eventually we'll hope to sit down with the Finance Committee and the School Committee on the same issue. And then, once we have a better sense of the budgeting process, then think about what steps we could recommend. So that's where we are.
So Sam, you're saying that your committee is evaluating the possibility of developing a proposed bylaw for the special town meeting that would define the budget process in fine detail for the town of Holliston. That would include bringing in the rules defined by the Special Act, existing bylaws to that extent, and identifying who is doing what during the operating budget omnibus buildup as well as the capital process. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Although, if we have to deal with this as a bylaw change, then the Select Board would need to optimize dealing with bylaws at the special town meeting.
Understood. Understood. Now, when you think of the necessity for this, is some time ago, when you approached the former board earlier this spring, you mentioned that there were some apparent collisions of roles between the Special Act and the bylaws. Is it your committee's intent to try to identify where those pressure points are developing and identify ways to make it more seamless and identify where the authority needs to be for certain steps?
That would be part of our task in coming back with a recommendation for a development bylaw.
Okay. And forgive me if you stated this, but I wanted to clarify. You mentioned you're going to be meeting next week with our town administrator and the financial team. In the course of your committee's efforts, will you be discussing these details with the Finance Committee?
The purpose of that meeting is the same as the purpose of this meeting, which is to better understand the current budget process in developing the town budget. So that'll be the topic. There are other issues later on, probably with each of them, but that's the focus of the meeting for next Tuesday.
Mr. Sparrell, do you have any questions?
Just one. Sam, did you mention that a lot of other towns have in their bylaws a codification of this process? Is that true?
It is. It turns out that it's basically towns that have charters. It's hard to, I mean, there, I haven't found too many, and we, in our look at towns, haven't found many where that's laid out in the bylaws. It's generally been found in towns that have created charters along with general bylaws, and it's in the charter. It's, you know, it's same, it has a pretty much the same title of finance and fiscal procedures, but there's no standard approach. I mean, they're all different, and, you know, are more limited than others. But we have, and one of the things, one of the issues we'll talk about today in our meeting later on, is a meeting that's been put together on 15 towns that have these articles that lay out the budget process and sort of looking at trends that come from that.
Okay. That's all. Thanks. Thank you. Tina, any questions?
Yes, Sam. So I have the bylaws open here. I'm looking at Section 6, Part D. I think, so that's where budget comes up, when you do just a simple word search. This describes the town administrator role. What you're talking about is something more procedural, the actual development of, the process by which you develop the budget. That's what you're referring to when you were talking about an additional bylaw added?
Yes.
Okay.
It actually would be a whole article, bylaw article, laying out the budget development process.
Okay. Thank you.
Now, there's some, there's some time of towns, Ashland's a good example, where, you know, it's very detailed, and it's, you know, each one is based on how many days before annual town meeting. So we're not sure we're going to follow that approach, but, you know, some are more detailed, some are less, but it's, that's what gave us the idea that particularly noticing that Holliston really didn't have anything like that, that it would be appropriate at this point to do that and have that prepared for, you know, the next town meeting.
Thank you, Sam. I observed two members of the Finance Committee are on the call. Do they or any other individuals who are on the call virtually have any questions about this step that the Governance Committee is advancing in our direction? So hearing none, we will move on to the...
Good.
Not at this time, right. So we'll move on to the next step, Sam, as I started to suggest, that you had asked the board, this board, to take into consideration some answers to a variety of questions, so as to give your committee some clarity on the understanding of how currently the town of Holliston's budget development process unfolds. I will, I'll ask the questions, and then I will ask my fellow colleagues if they would like to utter some responses. These questions, for the most part, are very straightforward. We should be able to get you some answers to each one, and if that generates any follow-up questions, let's bring those in. The first question that the Governance Committee puts forth to the Select Board is, when does the town's annual budget process begin? Mr. Sparrell, do you have a comment on that?
As far as I can tell, I'd say that it starts right after a special town meeting, usually around November, and there's starting conversations about guidelines, expectations, and tax rates. That's my experience in the process.
Tina, would you concur?
For me, my recollection is it started in January.
Yeah. So typically in November, it's my understanding, the Finance Committee traditionally in the last three to five years or so, has initiated the schedule by looking at revenues and projected revenues associated with the coming fiscal year, but that's when the groundwork is laid. Number two, does Holliston establish an annual budget calendar, and who decides the schedule? Ben?
The schedule and calendar that I've seen has been established by the Finance Committee, and it's, they do schedule, create schedules, and it coincides with the Select Board. I'm not sure how much give and take there is, but I definitely know that the Finance Committee has created the, creates a calendar.
Tina, any feedback?
No.
So my take is the same. Recently, the Finance Committee has more of a grip on the schedule. They declare their interest in requesting information from departments. I would say that under Mr. LeBeau, our previous town administrator, there was more of a collaborative dialogue on that schedule associated with the Finance Committee and the town administrator's interest. That was some time ago. Number three, who sets the annual budget guidelines for the budget accounts? Mr. Sparrell?
The Finance Committee sets those guidelines.
Tina?
That would be my recollection.
Yeah, they're, in my opinion, recently, the board or committee that seems to have the most guidance over budget guidelines for budget accounts. Again, in my past experience, the previous town administrator, Mr. LeBeau, was much more active in collaborating those guidelines associated with the various budget accounts, not so much in the last several years. Number four, who is responsible for preparing the annual operating budget? Mr. Sparrell?
Each department produces their own budget and gives it to the Finance Committee, who then compiles the budget and makes recommendations based on those contributions from each department.
Tina?
My experience and recollection, and to quote the Finance Committee Chair, is that the Finance Committee makes the sausage, which is the annual operating budget.
So there's a little bit of delineation here. The, in my, in my opinion, the responsibility for preparing the operating budget at this point kind of enters a two-silo approach. Departments that report to the Board, the Select Board, rather, come before us and express their priorities, their wants, their needs. We extol on them our interests, and there's, there's some, not a lot, but there is some work done at that level before they make their way down to the Finance Committee. But in terms of sequence, the point here is that, once the budget season is underway, Select Board departments come here first, and then the FinCom. Mr. Hearn?
I would just interject that, as I was trying to get my hands around what led into the FY21 process, Chris Mayo pulled the emails previously from last year for me at my request, and the email went out to department heads through Sharon Emrick, the town accountant, on behalf of Jeff, requesting people to fill out budget spreadsheets on January 8, 2020, acknowledging that it's a little bit later in the year than usual, but about that time. So January 8, 2020, for the FY21 budget process, is when department heads heard from the accountant on behalf of Jeff Ritter.
Yeah. And I seem to think we could look backwards. I seem to think the Finance Committee preceded that by at least a month.
Okay.
With their guideline.
Yeah, those conversations were in early December.
Yeah.
I just would qualify that, I think, when I looked at this, and I think about this question, who's responsible for the annual operating budget, the Select Board certainly has their input over each department, but the Finance Committee would take everything and sort of say, like, okay, here, this piece makes sense, or this piece makes sense, or let's take this out, and started to sort of put everything into an aggregate from that sense.
The next...
Sorry. This did include salaries, so maybe what this email did then would take into consideration what had come out the month before and give that to department heads, so they would have that for their budget?
Yeah, there was, that was a complicated thing that I can explain offline, what would have happened there.
Okay. But to, to your point, I think the guideline that Jeff and Sharon passed on originated with Finance Committee guidelines.
Yes.
They were pushing them, if you will, rather than developing their own. Number five, who is responsible for preparing the capital budget? Mr. Sparrell?
So the capital budget...
You must love that question.
Yeah, I know.
For a lot of reasons.
Near and dear to my heart. So the Finance Committee establishes the set aside, and then each department puts together requests, and the Select Board approves the request, and then the Finance Committee is given the approvals from the Select Board, and then makes recommendations to town meeting.
Tina?
I wouldn't disagree too much from, or change my answer too much from what Ben has to say. I, I think my comments heading into July's town meeting were, are on record, and I won't revisit them, but my answer to this question, when it was posed to me by the Governance Committee, was the Finance Committee. And I drew the distinction between capital requests and the warrant, which, my experience is the Select Board is sitting in on and hearing, and the budget itself. And so again, my answer to question five there was, the Finance Committee is preparing the capital budget itself.
My answer would be a little bit more nuanced. I'll, I'll straight up say, I don't think the town of Holliston has a capital budget. It has a capital cycle, and biannually, the Select Board solicits capital budget items for the various warrants. Those items are then placed into consideration and in discussion with the Finance Committee. The various agencies, whether it's the schools, highway, police, whoever has capital item in play, will make their appeal to both boards as they see fit. The Select Board oversees the entry of the capital item into the warrant, while the Finance Committee assesses whether or not the capital item befits available funds for that particular warrant. But looking holistically, there is, in my opinion, no capital budget process, and I think that's a, that's a big missing link. Number six, should Holliston have a capital planning committee to assist in preparing the capital budget? Mr. Sparrell?
A few years ago, as I recollect, there was some discussion from this board about creating a capital planning committee, but it was abandoned because of Section 34 of the town bylaws, which had a capital improvement subcommittee of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee can't, the members can't be on other committees, but this is the one exception, because it's a subcommittee within the Finance Committee. And so that was sort of seen as the capital planning committee, I believe. I can't speak for the Select Board. I'm not sure exactly if that's their perspective, but the way it felt to me is that was kind of what that subcommittee was supposed to serve as.
Tina?
Yes. I believe we should have a capital committee that meets at least biannually. I recently was looking at sidewalk studies that have been done by other communities to kind of prepare for what is, I think, number eight on our agenda tonight, and it was clear to me that a lot of capital improvement plans were seeing sidewalk studies used with the capital committee making recommendations to the capital budget. I was seeing that link in many of the communities that I was looking at.
I would concur. Any capital planning committee that focuses entirely on the effort to pull together capital items in a thoughtful, planned manner is doing its town justice. The fact that we don't have an active one probably speaks to my comments on number five, that there is really no capital budget associated with that. We all acknowledge that the Collins Center did some work for us several years ago in developing a capital improvement tool, which was helpful, but any such tool requires care and feeding, and without a capital planning committee or some other group or individual to oversee it, the data kind of ages out pretty quickly. So to your committee's work ahead, Sam, I would say this area probably needs some work as well. It's, it seems to be rather dormant, from what we observe. Number seven, when does the Select Board receive the proposed complete operating budget and capital budget? Mr. Sparrell?
So from my experience, the Select Board would receive it around maybe a couple weeks before a town meeting, once the Finance Committee has approved their recommendations, and then given it to the Select Board. And the capital budget, this is, again, you know, we can have an argument about whether or not the, it's a budget, it's a process, you know, what exactly we're looking at, but those numbers and that information is provided. According to the Select Board's policy, they should be seeing those proposals about two months beforehand as collected by the town administrator.
Tina?
My experience has been that it is with the Finance Committee report just before town meeting, maybe a week or two before that in draft form.
So this question is twofold. It deals with the operating budget and capital budget. To the extent that the Select Board receives a complete operating budget, we, in the past, under our previous town administrator, had a very active and vibrant operating budget that was sort of, you know, growing organically as the process moved. Select Boards were informed of that content. That has not been the practice lately. The domain of the operating budget has shifted to the Finance Committee, and frankly, in my time on this board, I've not seen a full, complete operating budget until town meeting, when the Finance Committee delivers its final product. With respect to the capital budget, I would just go back to our earlier remarks. The capital budget, if you will, does come out and basically feed into available funds twice a year. We do have a capital request policy. To Ben's point, there's a bit of a cycle to it, and it starts usually two months before a town meeting.
Right.
And then it moves forward through the various boards. So essentially, that's the, that's the path it takes. The operating budget and the capital budget tend to work in parallel, not necessarily complementing each other. It may get to a complementary status when it reaches the Finance Committee, where they start talking about the cost benefit of capital funds versus other funds, but that's how we see it. Number eight, when does the Finance Committee receive the proposed operating budget, and from whom? Ben?
So the Finance Committee receives operating budgets from each department that they aggregate, so the proposed is self-generated, I guess you could say, based on the departments as they provide their, their operating needs. And so basically, when they compile it, and once they approve it, it becomes the operating budget from them.
Tina?
Yeah, my response was that the Finance Committee owned the draft spreadsheet. That was a working document used by the Finance Committee. However, when I asked to see it, I was provided a copy and therefore had access to it.
I built that, by the way.
And you sent it to me.
I sent it to you.
The, I concur with my colleagues on that one. Number nine, does the Finance Committee receive the operating and capital budgets at the same time as the Select Board, or after each is approved by the Select Board?
So there's a little nuance here, because the Select Board, the Finance Committee's policy is not to, they're not going to look at budgets that haven't been approved by the authority, the, the board with authority. So the departments that are under the Select Board would have been seen by the Select Board before going to the Finance Committee. So the Police Department, the DPW, would have to come before this board before they could go to the Finance Committee. But that being said, the items that were not, that were not necessarily under the jurisdiction of the Select Board would not necessarily get to the Select Board directly or until the Finance Committee had compiled. There can be exceptions. I don't know if there are, but by and large, as far as I know, those other boards would have sent their information directly to the Finance Committee and not necessarily to the Select Board.
And when you say their information, you're coupling operating and capital?
Correct.
Okay. Go ahead, Tina.
I have nothing different to say than that. My assumption here is that the Finance Committee receives budgets approved by the Select Board about, within a week of us approving them, because they then meet, their schedule is staggered after ours, so.
Yes.
That is what I...
Okay. I concur with my colleagues. Number 10, when does the School Committee submit its budget for review by town officials, and to whom? Mr. Sparrell?
In my experience, the School Committee would submit their budget to review by town officials when they would send it to the Finance Committee. They would present a, they would have a presentation to the Finance Committee that would include any changes or based on needs or change, or things that needed to be changed within their budget. So they would present it to the Finance Committee. Usually March, mid, mid to late March, I would say. They're usually one of the last ones to submit to the Finance Committee.
Tina?
So it was February when the School Committee had a strategic initiatives meeting. That was my first preview of what they were looking to add to their budget. I asked for and received a summary document from the Budget Subcommittee Chair, but I have not yet seen a detailed or complete School Committee budget, except for those that are approved and posted to the school's website after town meeting.
I'll add on to Mr. Sparrell's remarks. At the front end, the School Committee goes through various rounds of its budget before it reaches the Finance Committee, and I understand it starts with a superintendent presentation of a budget proposal to the School Committee.
Yes.
There is usually some give and take with that exercise that is one of the reasons why they're relatively late in the calendar, because they're achieving different goals internally before they, the School Committee takes its final vote on what would then be referred to the Finance Committee. With respect to their operating budget, they do not pass through the Select Board. They go directly to FinCom.
And I just would add, so certainly, there's opportunities to look at a lot of what they're talking about through their, through their process. They have, like, late January, they have their strategic initiatives, then the superintendent makes the recommendations, and then they have a budget, goes through their subcommittee, and somebody can correct me if I'm speaking out of turn, but I believe that's about how it goes, and then it goes to the full School Committee and then to the Finance Committee. So that's why it takes so long in the process.
Right. Number 11, is the School Committee budget submitted to the town administrator at the same time as the Finance Committee, or does the Finance Committee receive the budget later from the town administrator or Select Board? Mr. Sparrell?
As far as I know, in my experience, the Finance Committee gets the School Committee budget before the Select Board or the town administrator, and it goes directly from the schools to the Finance Committee and does not pass through the administrator or the Select Board.
Tina?
I agree with that. I could not answer the question accurately. I did not believe that, I do not believe that our town administrator, prior to July 20th, received the School Committee budget.
Recently, over the last several years, I would concur, that has been the path of travel. There's been no interaction between the School Committee budget and the town administrator. In my past history, under the previous town administrator, there was a bit more connectivity between those budgets and the larger towns omnibus. The town administrator was advised of those numbers and worked them into the general operating budget that he was tracking. We've not seen that, though, so things have changed. Number 12, the budget acted on by town meeting is presented by which official, board or committee? Ben?
The budget at town meeting is presented by the Finance Committee.
Tina?
Finance Committee.
Concur here. The Select Board does not have any presentation of this material, in my memory, over the last several years. Number 13, what changes to the existing budget process would help you succeed in your work, and how? Ben?
So this is just me speaking out of turn. I don't really have, like, because I'm not in the nitty-gritty of some of the details, this is just my experience here. But I would like to see a little bit more of a holistic view of the budget process, because I think one of the things that happens through going by department by department is that you wind up holding each department accountable, and there's no, there isn't as much opportunity for fluidity between departments. Now, that's not to say that doesn't exist, but it's not part of the budget process. It's usually part of the massaging at the end to try to get everything... It's usually part of the massaging at the end, to try to get everything to work. And I'd just like to see a little bit more of a 30,000-foot view in the process itself, as opposed to the sausage-making at the end. That's just my personal opinion there. And there's, and yeah, so that's really my take on this process.
Tina?
So, it's a two-part question. The changes I'd like to see are to receive quarterly reports that compare the approved budget for the current fiscal year to current conditions, and I'd like to see updates on year-to-date revenue and expenditures. I'd like a report on the assumptions to be used for the upcoming year's budget process. The how, would this help me succeed in my job on the select board? I feel decisions and assumptions about town finances are for good, for bad, whatever, but are conservative. That's an observation. And maybe more pointedly, they, my experience, in the year and a half I've been on the board, is that they're not well-connected to or related to town priorities and goals. I don't see that as a parallel process. Identifying priorities and goals for the town, and matching that up, and talking about it as we're going through the budget process. So, I agree with Ben on the holistic view.
I also have a two-part answer here. The first one is, what changes to the existing budget process? I think there needs to be more sun and light shined upon the development of revenue projections for the coming fiscal year. At the end of the day, a lot of folks never see that part of the process, because it's done usually by, you know, one or two individuals, and the number begins the process by which everything else is driven. Revenue projections are a skill. They're, it is a task that is sometimes challenging, especially in years like this. And I do think, with respect to a budget process, there needs to be a better defined role and skill set of individuals sharing information on revenue prognostications, and justification of why certain revenue numbers are built. Too much of that right now is not in the public view. Moving on to other areas that need changing, I do believe that currently, the finance committee seems to dominate the process of handling the budget development. I would like to see more collaboration and input by the town administrator. The special act defines a role for that person, and I hope through the governance committee's work, that that path is defined, so that the town can have a better view, or a more competing view of ideas for how the town should spend its precious financial resources. Those are my two items. Last question. Overall, how could Holliston's current budget development process be improved? Ben?
I did want to just back up to one thing that you said, that the revenues, I understand what you're saying about the revenue process. I mean, this year was a little bit crazy, because of everything that happens with COVID, but in the years past, we kind of, we went through each of the items pretty methodically, and pretty, in a pretty standard way, in the finance committee. Now, we could argue about whether or not it should be originating in the finance committee, but we certainly did look at it in a pretty rigid way, and looking, going through each piece in a process. But the only thing I'll say, so the thing I want to say about the current process budget development, I'd like to see more collaboration between boards. I'd really like to see us, select board, finance committee, and school committee being able to sort of sit down and understand where each one is going. And I mean, one of the things that I wish we could do a little bit more of is to, instead of going department by department, I'd like to almost see us have, like, you get, here's how much pie you get, you know, something like that. And I'm not, I don't know what the number should be, but just to try to give things a little bit more of that holistic approach, to be able to say, okay, schools is how much you get, select board, this is what you're working with, and then if there's, like, some nuance in there, maybe there's some play, because I think that, because of the department by department, I feel like sometimes, certain departments can win, and other departments can lose, instead of sort of, like, working together to sort of figure out priorities, and let the authority, boards with authority be able to make some of those calls. So, that's just my take. I'd just like to see more collaboration between boards in the process.
Thanks, Ben. Tina?
I absolutely agree with Ben. I would look forward to and embrace more frequent tri-board meetings for this purpose, for the budget and capital process. I'll just give an example of how could the overall budget development process be improved. I think that Tuesday night highlighted something very big for me. I don't feel necessarily, through my experience, that the operating and capital budgets are, again, tied to the goals and priorities of our community. To hear residents speak up about, do we have a budget for signs? And to know that it's $3,000, I believe, in the highway department, tells me that we have a big disconnect, when we hear that crying out from the community. To hear residents calling out for, what kind of enforcement tools, equipment do we have? And to know that we haven't had a capital request, that I can recall of late, where we're purchasing some of that necessary equipment for our different public safety officials to do that kind of monitoring. I'm not judging right or wrong, but what I am saying is that those comments struck as a big disconnect, from what I know to be the budget, the operating and capital budget process.
Thanks, Tina. Ben, thanks for your comments on the revenue remarks I made. I wanted to identify November of 2018, lower town hall, finance committee meeting, when the chairman developed the financial revenue projection that the finance committee would be taking. He discussed his model for revenue tracking, and the finance committee absorbed his recommendations, and that became the basis for the FY '20 budget at the time, and where things would be building up to. So, that was my point about sort of building revenue models in isolation. It's a task that's sort of a high-skill area, that should involve multiple individuals, and I think that goes to your point on number 14, which I will echo, collaboration. The budget process involves a lot of different pieces. I think we've identified the capital piece as being slightly adrift. It doesn't really connect with the operating budget needs. It just falls into the warrants, and items are prioritized, and the town moves forward. Over here, you have a capital improvement plan, or a tool, that is right now not being used adequately. And as I mentioned, I think the revenue piece has to have a solid involvement, collaboration with the town administrator, I believe, and his fiscal team resources, to help all parties understand what should be used for any given year's revenue target. Collaboration, I think, Mr. Tyler, would be the overall consensus from this board on ways to improve the budget development process going forward. Is this helpful, Sam?
Very helpful, and I think I have to explain the basis for the questions, and the questions that were asked were not based on Holliston. They're basically based on a review of 15 other towns, that had town administrators, town managers, and the process that those took through, and the trends that came out of that. And so, that's the basis for the questions. So, clearly, in other towns, administrator, the select board play a larger role in the budget process. So, we're, this is very helpful to hear this, and appreciate the time. I can't say that it was all that surprising, but it sort of reinforced some thoughts, and from that, we will then proceed with, you know, the financial officers next Tuesday, and to formulate, you know, recommendations that we can propose on this process. And I think the capital improvement committee idea, I've noticed that in other towns, it's not, it's, there's basically one representative from the finance committee, somebody from the planning board is usually part of that, somebody from the select board is part of that, or the town manager is ex officio, moderator may be part of that as well. So, it's representatives from a number of different boards, not just one. So, it's an interesting contrast.
Sam, I think that we're a little over time. I will offer the opportunity for any members of your committee, if they have any questions for us, before we allow you to move to your meeting, and ours to the rest of our agenda. Is there anything we can help clarify, or at this point, are you folks in good stead?
It's helpful, thank you. Yeah, it's very helpful, thanks.
Very well. I'm hoping, Sam...
You guys were set?
Yes, I think you are. I'm hoping through Travis, we can make arrangements to have you folks join us, perhaps as early as two more weeks or so, as your schedule permits. Keep us in the loop on your work, so that we can begin possibly including some of it in the upcoming warrant. So, if you could let us know how things are shaking out, we'll bring you on, so we can have some more public discussion about your work.
Okay, we will do so, and thank you for your time.
Likewise, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all.
You guys?
We're going to take a brief recess at this point. From our meeting, we will adjourn in just a few minutes. Good evening, folks. We're back. It is 8:45. We're rejoining the select board's meeting for August 31st. We have just left the governance committee to go about their task of continuing their meeting. We will do so as well. The next item on our agenda involves a coronavirus community update from Chief Cassidy. Mike, could you join us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since I saw the board last week, we have had four new cases, which brings our total, since this began back in March, up to 73 total cases. But we have also had three cases which have recovered, which brings up to 65, the number that have recovered, which means with the two COVID-related fatalities, that leaves six active cases. Last Wednesday, when the Department of Public Health released their weekly data on their interactive map, we moved from the gray category to the green category. And so, once again, it will sound like a recurring message, but I would encourage the public to wash their hands. I would encourage them to wear face coverings. I would encourage them to practice physical distancing, and they would also be encouraged to avoid large groups.
Mike, with respect to these cases, these relatively few that have evolved...
Yes.
Have you noticed any trends? Are there any areas that, you know, to your point about monitoring the community's coronavirus status, are these cases found in unique isolation, or is there some commonality to them?
There is no known linkage to them. We haven't identified that there has been an outbreak in town. These all appear to be isolated. They're in different parts of the community, different types of housing, and there appears to be no linkage through the surveillance that our public health nursing consultant has conducted.
Got it. Okay.
That's it for the community update.
Do you have any questions on that?
You ask my questions.
Tina?
And I feel like every week we go over this, you have no demographic information on those who are tested positive, other than address.
That is correct.
Okay. And I would encourage folks not to infer anything other than the number itself.
Correct. And our recent cases, the majority of them have continued to be at single-family homes. We still have not had anything at our nursing home, and six of our eight group homes have had cases since March, but haven't had outbreaks in those, as we've seen at some other congregate care facilities.
Mid-June, maybe early July, I remember you giving us the rate, those tested versus the number of positives.
Yes.
Do we have an idea of the number tested? I know that testing is, for most of us, much more readily available, and I think stigma, or barrier, or whatever you want to call it, is dropping by the wayside for individuals to go and get tested. So, when you say four more since last week, is there any way you can indicate how many more maybe were tested? So, we get that from Representative Dykma's emails, the percent positive rate. Do we have that information?
Only what is provided through the DPH website on a weekly basis as well. And to the, your point of not only has the stigma been reduced, but also, the requirement is there for more people to get tested. Several months ago, the requirement was, stay home.
That's right.
And you only really got tested if you had symptoms, or you'd been exposed to someone who may have had symptoms, but now, if you've traveled...
That's right.
And you'd like to resume normal operations...
Or return to work.
You have to get tested. Correct.
Okay.
So, that's...
Mike, earlier this week, you gave us your update, and in it, there was some messaging that there was an incident that occurred on a call relative to a, an address that was thought to be COVID-free, but whatever, there was a mix-up.
Yes.
You seemed to indicate your message to us, it was a follow-up action item on your half, on your behalf, to find out how that information went sideways. Do you have anything to report tonight?
Still waiting to hear back from the Board of Health. They were reaching out to the nursing consultant to find out where the discrepancy might have come. I've also had communications with one of the supervisors at the other public safety agency to discuss how they're tracking it in their PSAP as well.
In that particular case, I found that report to be very concerning, for a lot of reasons. Hoping that our Board of Health, with your assistance, can help suss out an answer, so you can report back to us on what happened, so it can't be repeated.
Right.
Any other questions on this portion of his update?
No.
Any other questions from our gathered audience? Hearing none, Mike, keep going, if you have anything else for us.
Great, I do, thank you. I know you have a robust agenda this evening. So, I have three financial requests for you. The first would be from facilities. This would be phase one of a two-phase project to improve the ventilation on the first floor of the town hall. This would allow the windows to be opened and stay open, so that we can increase exterior air coming in to improve airflow. A lot of other communities have used CARES Act funds for improving HVAC and ventilation for the health of their staff. Phase one is improvements to the windows. Phase two, which we don't have a price yet for, which will come down the line, will be adding some screens. But the phase one request from facilities is $4,000 for improvements to the windows, and that would come under the category of cleaning disinfecting of public buildings, which would be a $25.75 CARES FEMA split.
What type of improvements are we talking about? What do you get for $4,000?
So, basically, if you were to go over to that window and try and open... So basically, if you were to go over to that window and try and open it, you might have to exert enough effort that you could push so hard that you could inadvertently put your arm through a very thick pane of glass. So the intent is to be able to improve the mechanism so that the windows will open more freely without requiring as much of a fulcrum and force, and then also to allow them to remain open. You may have seen in some departments, if they manage to get the window open, it may be propped open with a brick or a book, which determines the height at which it can remain open. So this would allow the weights and the mechanism inside the structure of the window themselves to open and flow more freely and allow them to stop where you want them to stop.
Any questions, Ben?
Functionality.
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good...
Functionality.
Functionality is good.
Good summation.
This isn't going to have any issues with the...
Historic nature of the window.
That would be my question.
Nope. Facilities has researched all of this and has found that the scope of the work that he is proposing and has a price for will not invalidate the historic nature of our windows.
Excellent. Tina?
That was my question.
Mike, the only thing I would say is, as we get closer to the cold weather with windows open, there better be a protocol put in place for the employees to secure the windows at the end of the day, leaving them open on a weekend or a snowstorm, rainstorm. Bad things happen, but I'll let you carry on with the next step.
Okay. So, second is a request from the Board of Health, which would be requesting $1,000 for additional A-frame signs and supplies. The A-frame signs that they've had in the past, which they've deployed a few of them to the trail and other public spaces. There was one that, early on in the spring, was moving from location to location. I know at one point, it was secured in front of the fire station by our flagpole. Those are dual-use, and right now, they are being used to support voting efforts. And so, we had to recall the mask A-frame signs on the trail to allow voting directional signage to occur. So the request of the Board of Health, I was at their meeting last week before I came to yours, would be for $1,000, which would be for five A-frame signs and the supplies, which would allow them to print additional information. And so that would come under the signage and communications category, which would also be a $25-75 CARES FEMA split.
And the Board of Health approved it in a vote?
Board of Health did vote on this and asked me to bring it to you.
Excellent. Tina, any questions?
Nope.
Mike, anything else?
Those are the two new requests, and then there was the other one that you had pending from last week, which I know you wanted to discuss more about, which was the short-term rental or mortgage support.
Let's take a vote on the facility improvements for the Town Hall windows and the Board of Health request for A-frames. Mr. Sparrow, would you like to make a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion for us to spend the money for the windows improvements at the Town Hall and the A-frame signs for the Board of Health.
Ms. Hein, a second?
Yes, second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That carries. Michael, here you go.
Great. And then the last thing is the rent mortgage relief program, which your board saw and started to mull over last week, and then there were some questions, and I know there have been further discussions, so...
We're going to get an update on that momentarily.
Okay, I know you... So you want me to go back out and slide out?
Why don't you take a five-second break?
Perfect.
And we'll ask Ms. Hein, Mr. Hearn, if they'd like to introduce this issue again for the board's consideration. There were some follow-up questions brought back to Ms. Weiner to help us understand a little bit about the benefits of the program, how it would functionally work. So Tina, Travis, Jackie, who would you like to speak?
Can I start off real quick?
Sure. Jackie, one minute. Let Travis intro. Go, Travis.
So as I came in as the Town Administrator, I had been following along with this discussion through the CARES for quite a while now, and I know it was sort of how the logistics could work. So I did sit down with Jackie probably two weeks ago at this point to just say, sort of, from Town Hall end, what we can do, and obviously Jackie's group will go into the mechanics of what they already have going and how that can work with this process. I sat down with the auditor, with the emergency management director, the accountant, to just sort of say how a program like this would work from the Town End, from the CARES Act funding, and then the handoff can be obviously discussed from Jackie's end. And I don't know if, just that's sort of the history on where we were over the last few weeks, but if Ms. Hein wanted to add anything else?
No, I'm sure Jackie will summarize the changes that she's made in the past week based on feedback and questions she's received, so I'll let Jackie do that. I guess, yeah, I don't have anything to add. We'll wait for the questions to start coming, but as I have said before, I am in full support of this program, and I am deeply appreciative of those who have developed it.
Jackie, we'll let you take over at this point.
Okay, great. Let me just introduce myself again to callers who are joining us tonight for the first time, and also for anybody who is new to Holliston or does not know about Holliston Youth and Family Services. So I am the Director of the Town Department, known as Youth and Family Services, and we have a mission to provide counseling and social services to Holliston residents and to promote behavioral health and wellness for the entire community. And so my role is to provide counseling, clinical consultation, to supervise our other clinicians, and to help all staff provide resources and information to town residents, and to provide some opportunities and activities that promote emotional and mental health wellness. So thank you for allowing me to talk with you folks tonight. I also want to introduce John Drohan, who is joining me on this call. He is the Chair of the Holliston Community Action Program. And let me start first by saying that this came to be because the CARES Fund money is to help the community recover from the pandemic, from the COVID-19 crisis that we are in. And so when we talk tonight, we're talking about real people who have succumbed to this virus, who've been affected by this virus in one way, shape, or form. I think the number is at 185,000 Americans have been lost to this virus. And so, the reason why we're preventing this is because most people right now are struggling. And so if you are listening, or if you were following last week and you are experiencing a hardship, if you are one of our healthcare heroes, if you are an educator, if you are an essential worker, just know that our hearts are going out to you. We have a ton of compassion. My hope is that, as a department, we can be supporting you in whatever you're going through at this time. And so with that, I'm going to segue into what we were speaking about last week, which was some opportunity for residents who are experiencing a loss of income or a financial barrier that is preventing them from being able to pay their rent or their mortgage. We are looking at $25,000 to be used with the Holliston Youth Commission Board and the Holliston Community Action Fund. And the process in which we will be facilitating this is that we will have an application with a deadline in early fall, sometime probably in October. We will be able to assess the applicant's needs from a financial standpoint and determine how much of that $25,000 we will need. After speaking with many members of the board and also of the Finance Committee, I took into account their feedback around making sure that we limit in scope those who qualify for this program so that it's a clear-cut process for determining who is eligible. So we updated our application to include some income statements for the head of the household. We also were asking information on net worth, and we are including a participant consent form, which will essentially, it tells the applicant that they are responsible for what they are reporting and that it is true, and if not, then they will be responsible for paying that money back. So this is assistance for up to three months of rent and mortgage assistance, and the amounts that are available, you should have in the guidelines. But for instance, for a two-bedroom apartment, it is $1,600 that we would be able to provide. It is just the principal and interest, so the applicant is responsible for paying the remainder. And the way that that gets processed is that the application comes through Youth and Family Services for confidentiality purposes. It's really important that we uphold these people and their stories and what they're going through, and make sure that they are supported in this process and that we understand kind of what the needs are. It then goes to my board, the Holliston Youth Advisory Committee, and then to the Holliston Community Action Fund for final approval. So the Holliston Community Action Fund are the ones that cut the check. They cut the check directly to the lender or to whoever the landlord is, and that gets sent directly to the lender. So there's no concern on that end about it going to the wrong place. And in addition to the application, there's also a narrative component where we have to see a demonstrated loss of income or demonstrate... The application essentially needs to demonstrate that there has been a barrier, and what that barrier is, or a loss of income and what that loss of income is, and then we sort of make the final decision. And we also want to know what steps have been taken to make the situation, to resolve the situation that that person has been. So I'm happy to answer any questions about sort of the changes that have been made in regards to the income component of it, and also to our process where we are... We're creating an application window where we can evaluate sort of what the need is and return any money before the December 31 end date of the CARES Act program so that that money can be redistributed if need be.
Mr. Sparrow, any questions?
I have, yes. You had mentioned, well, first of all, thank you for putting this together, and I appreciate the irresponsiveness to my questions. So I want to commend you for doing all that work to get this prepared, so thank you for doing that, Jackie. We really appreciate it. So my question is, is you had mentioned that you were going to perhaps reach out to council to find out what their take was on some of this, and I was wondering if you had done that yet for the process.
At this time, Travis and I are working on sort of what a consent form looks like. I have one from Ashland that I can share with our Town Council just to ensure that it is something that we can use, but it's right now, something that Travis and I need to go back to and finalize.
And so I should have mentioned all of the initial people from the Town End before it gets over there that I had talked to. This is something that had been discussed, and I think what I said was, we'll be coming back once we have everything for a final review to make sure that everybody's comfortable.
Awesome.
I don't think that's a roadblock, but one final step certainly before any dollars go out the door.
Yeah, so that was, and the other two things were both comments, and one, you just basically mentioned, I'd like to be able to see sort of what are the final steps and processes look like, as I know some of this is a little bit fluid. And then the second thing is, is just to make sure, as Jackie, you and I had discussed, is just, I'd like to see like some kind of a report that sort of says, like, here's how many applicants we had, here's how many were approved, here's how much money was dispersed, and sort of an ongoing understanding of the activity within this particular program so we could sort of, to make sure that it's working and that it's doing what it's supposed to, but it's not getting, it's not beyond our control or the scope that we had intended. So, but thank you. That's all I got.
Tina?
No, I don't have anything to add, other than my personal comments, my personal opinions on the benefit of this program, which I will not share right now. I do have a question for Chief Cassidy. You are submitting a weekly update for the CARES Act and FEMA funds that we've expended, that we've received back and so on.
Yes.
This would just go into that report?
Correct.
After the board hears the, as we did tonight, we approved the $1,000 for the Board of Health, we approved the $4,000 for the Facilities Manager to do the work, and then that gets updated here on this report.
Right. So depending on the mechanics of what the board does tonight and how it votes, it could get added towards the bottom of the spreadsheet where it says, "Select Board Voted Pending."
Sure.
And down there, you see the amount for the ballot box and for the camera and AV system for the Senior Center that were voted previously. And so depending on how you voted tonight, it could get embedded in there until it gets spent, at which point it goes up.
Yes, understood.
Earlier in the spreadsheet and gets calculated to what's been spent.
This spreadsheet's been working well for you?
Yes.
Okay. You don't see the process being any different?
No.
Okay.
No, for me philosophically, this would be very similar to, the Senior Center has been providing Meals on Wheels.
Right.
To eligible individuals, who we don't know who those are.
Right.
And we understand they've determined eligibility in the same way that the school has been providing meals for families, and they've determined eligibility, so...
And I see, I think, 18 different categories here? So Youth and Family Services joins one of these categories, becomes another category here on this?
Yes, absolutely. And the original spreadsheet, when I brought you the $550,000 request, didn't have this in it, although you had mentioned it, but it got rolled up into the 1.3 million request. So there is headroom, so to speak, between what was approved by the Administration and Finance Division versus what the original application was.
And you are the owner of this document?
Yes.
And you are updating it for the benefit of the Town Administrator and discussing?
I give it to the Town Administrator. He shares it with you, and then after any changes that are voted on each night, each Monday by the board, it gets updated again before it gets shared with the Finance Committee.
Given the ownership you've had over this document for the past couple of weeks, months, do you see the need for additional level of scrutiny for this type of program?
I do not.
Thank you. Okay, that's it.
All right. Jackie, thanks so much for giving us your report this evening. I do note Mr. Drohan's on the call, and he has a role here, and I wanted to give John a chance to speak tonight if he was interested in contributing some information for residents to understand how this process will work. John, if you'd like to say anything?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm John Drohan. I'm the Chair of the Holliston Community Action Fund. Just in background, we're a nonprofit organization. Our purpose is to provide financial relief for people who undergo hardship in a confidential way. We've been doing this for about nine years now. Recently, before, we were part of the Holliston Business Association, but now the Community Action Fund is its own separate 501(c)(3). And we've, all that time, we've worked hand-in-hand with the Department of Youth and Family Services. They're the ones who determine, you know, anybody who is in trouble, who needs money, they will go through Youth and Family Service to maintain confidentiality. And us, we as a board, our job is to make sure that they, that we have our stipulations as to what people actually would qualify for, but really, the onus is put on to Youth and Family Service, and in particular Jackie, to determine if these people qualify, if they meet the criteria, and to determine, you know, what exactly they need. So this could be anything from paying a $500 electric bill, this could be buying a computer for somebody who is going back to college, you know, anything in between there. So when we were approached, so this system, like I said, we've had in place for nine years. When we were approached with the idea of, now we have the CARES Act with some potential money that could come and be used predominantly for housing, that, this was great. So the way we looked at it is that Jackie kind of has one arrow in her quiver, which is the Community Action Fund money, but now she has a second arrow in her quiver in that if somebody needs help, they can, particularly because they've been affected by the pandemic, that they can have some housing relief in the, you know, through the form of this $25,000. So that's essentially as I understand it. The Community Action Fund, our board has agreed, and we've talked to both Tina Hein and John Cronin, we've said that we're on board, we want to help, and we're happy to apply our process to this. So just so people understand, the way I envision this working and the way it's worked in the past is that if somebody is in financial hardship, whether they're, and in this case, if they're in financial hardship due to, as a direct result of the pandemic, they'll go, you know, they'll go to Youth and Family Service. They go, they talk to Jackie. Jackie does her evaluation, just as she would have done, you know, prior to the pandemic. She talks to them, she finds out what their story is. She talks to them, she finds out what their story is, she finds out their financial information and finds out kind of what's, what's happening with them, and she knows and that she has the capability to provide them some, some relief through Community Action Fund money. Now, in the case where we have this additional money, I see the same process, but now Jackie, if someone says, look, I've lost my job, you know, I've been laid off because of the pandemic, I can't pay my mortgage, or I haven't, I'm behind on my mortgage, Jackie has this other money that she can then allocate, and again, using the, using the application that she's drawn up, but understanding that there's, there's a, there's a second, there's a second pot of money that, that these people can use as well, which is the Community Action Fund. So it'll be up to Jackie to kind of determine, okay, this is what's going on, this is where, this is what they, where they need help, and if it, if it applies, if it fits the categories for the, for the COVID-19 relief money, then she'll recommend that. And then we as a board, you know, as I said before, all we're, all we do as a board is we just make sure, she'll give us, you know, again, it's all strictly confidential, but she'll give us kind of a, a general background of what the situation is, and then we say, yep, that makes sense, that, that's what, that's, you know, that, that passes, that checks all of our, you know, all of our check list, it fits our, our criteria, and then we just approve the amount. And then, and with the case of the, with the case of the CARES Act money, that, that amount will be specified specifically as, as she's drawn it up in, in the application.
Thank you, John, appreciate that. Jackie, anything else to add before we move to take a vote on this funding?
No, that, that's it. Thank you.
Very well.
I did have a question. I did, I did have, just while I had everybody's attention, just two concerns, or just for clarification purposes. So is, who is responsible to provide the report to, I guess, to the chief?
We would be looking for Jackie to deliver information on the expenditures to Chief Cassidy, who in turn will inform our board through Mr. Ahern.
Okay, so is that going to be a weekly report, or is it kind of as it happens report?
I talked to Jackie today a little bit about that, and we'll defer to Jackie on the frequency, John, of the applications and the work. Right now, we have weekly updates, but if Jackie doesn't have any activity to report, it can go into the next week. Does that work for you, Jackie?
Yeah, absolutely. I was thinking that the first report could come right as the deadline is approaching, when we'll have much more information on who's applied, because we have a very small window at this point, so we want to be able to cast the net far and wide at this point and see what the actual need is, and then come back to the board with some information after that point. So I hope to have a bit of a, a better update, you know, as the application deadline approaches.
Is that helpful, John?
Yep, that's great. So I had a second concern, so about the timeline window, and we talked about this briefly, but so as I understand it, everything has to, it, the program ends by December 31st.
Correct.
And then, and is there any way to, to, let's say that, let's say it works and, you know, we helped five people, and, but then, you know, not everybody hears about it, is there any, what's the potential to be able to extend it, you know, past that deadline in order to, in order to, you know, sustain the program if it, if it seems as if it's, if it's helping people?
Right. We don't know, John. That is the big unknown. The CARES Act was funded by Congress to expire at the end of December. We've sent a correspondence to our state congresspeople to advocate for an extension of the CARES Act. I think most people expect further federal assistance in some way, shape, or form. We just don't know what it's going to look like, so stay tuned on that. But honest to God, we just don't know what, what Phase II or any other level of federal funding into 2021 would look like.
Okay, so, so again, you know, kind of war gaming the worst-case scenario. So just from a, from a, from a workload standpoint, if this takes, and it takes, you know, several weeks or a month for people to kind of get their, their head around it, or to get applications in, or, you know, if there's some, something that's missing or incomplete from the application, what I, what I would be concerned about is to have Jackie get, you know, 15 of these dropped on her desk, you know, in a short period of time with a, with a short turnaround window. Not that it couldn't be done, I know that the Youth and Family Service Board, as well as the Community Action Fund Board, you know, have all, we're willing to help if it turns into a, you know, if it just becomes too overwhelming just for her office, because she has, you know, this isn't the only thing that she does. So I guess that would be one thing to be, you know, that you guys would be, need to be made aware of, you know, is, is just to think about, you know, with respect to, you know, requirements from Jackie, because we as a board, I'm, I'm happy to help if, you know, our, our board is happy to help, like if you want us to provide, since we're actually going to cut the checks, we can provide the, you know, the monetary, you know, the, what we've sent out, give that report to Chief Cassidy, but again, just something to, to think about if we're, you know, again, if this turns into something really popular and, and there's, and there's a lot of work to do for this.
No, I certainly see that you're, you're thinking ahead. We, we understand that we're about to launch effectively a pilot program, and some things will be learned. We'll expect to hear from Jackie about what needs or off-ramps are necessary to achieve the goal, John, but, you know, four months is ahead of us. I think that's a little bit of time to get something beneficial to the citizens of Holliston achieved here. So at this point, I feel comfortable that, you know, once this gets going, we'll, we'll learn pretty quickly. The scope of this job, I think, is manageable. So with your help, I think Jackie will be able to succeed.
Okay.
Anything else, John?
No.
Okay, do we have another question from somebody else on the call?
May I speak?
Hi, Dan. Yes, good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you doing?
Pretty good.
Since I sent some questions to Jackie, and she was very helpful, I just thought it, I had a couple of concerns after watching the, the meeting last week. Most of them have been addressed. Look, I think it's a, it's a great program, we certainly want to help, you know, our, our neighbors in, in need. One of the bigger concerns I do still sort of have, though, I just, I don't think it, the reality is a problem, but it sort of has this weird kind of issue in that we're technically taking $25,000 and transferring from Holliston sort of discretion into a separate 501(c)(3).
Travis, do you want to take this answer? Because I think this might have something to do with the ID's. Okay?
Sure. Right, so the, the idea is that, yes, the, the money would be going to this other fund and then reporting back, and by a specific time, if not, if not spent, then the money would need to be returned. That's correct.
And this makes it somewhat unique in sort of the way we do things, right? I just, and, and all I'm asking for is that there be some sort of guard, or not, maybe, I, I, it's not because I distrust anybody, but it's sort of, you know, one of these things where you just want to address these things beforehand, I, I don't think that anyone's going to act, you know, in any kind of, it will or anything, but just that we were having town employees directing money that is not technically in-town hands anymore. If we just, if we could have some sort of contract or some sort of legal document drafted to sort of just, you know, state the sort of the expectations of, of the money. That, that's sort of one of my, my questions. And then to, to Mr. Drohan, will the, the money that's transferred to the Community Action Fund be put aside into a separate account from your, your other monies?
No, it'll just be accounted for inside our, our primary, we have, you know, we have one checking account, so. But it's, yeah, but from an accounting standpoint, it'll be segregated with.
What do we call mingle, though? And then, again, that's just sort of the historical nature, I guess, of it, has been that you've done private donations, which then you've offered to the town to use through the Youth and Family Services.
Yep.
Now, this is actually town money going in. And again, I'm not, you know, you know, saying that anything, you know, untowardly happened, but it's just, it's a, it's a different process than, than we've been spending.
Yeah, and we've, right, so we, we've also had, and we do this regularly because we'll have money, we have money that came in from another nonprofit, the Friends of Youth and Family Service, when they dissolved, their money came in, and that money is, is earmarked and set aside from an accounting standpoint to only be used for, you know, for projects that support what they, what they want, so we haven't spent any of that money. So from an accounting standpoint, it, it seems relatively easy to, to make sure that, that the town money, the town $25,000 is accounted for, and, and, and it, there won't be any, there, there was not going to be any, like, discretion as far as, you know, we'll maintain, okay, from the $25,000, we've spent $18,000, $6,000, whatever happens, and that's reported.
But, but you did say that your board would sort of take a vote, and would have to take a vote based upon sort of Jackie's recommendations, you said, okay, that sounds good, but what, I mean, you know, what happens if it doesn't sound good? I, I don't.
So, so it's not, so, so that's a good question. So if it, if, if it comes, so now we understand that we have, that there's a separate that, you know, if we're going to give away town, town money versus Community Action Fund money, those will be two separate checks. So let's say, for example, I come in and I have, you know, I've lost my job, I lost my job back in January, and I, and I need, you know, $5,000, and the towns, I'm going to get, you know, $3,000 from the town, but the Community Action Fund, our board has said, we're going to give you $2,000 for whatever other costs you need to. So they'll get a $3,000 check from, you know, what we do at Crow MAG, they'll get a $3,000 check that will represent the town money, and then, then any other money that gets distributed that's not town money will be Community Action Fund, and that'll all be documented.
So if Jackie comes to your board, though, and the Youth and Family Services Board has signed off on it, it's basically a rubber stamp from, from your board?
Yeah, yeah, so.
For the, for the town money?
Yeah, for the town money, yeah, absolutely. So, so it's not, I mean, if, again, the, our system, the way we've always done it is that the, because of the confidentiality.
Mike, do you still want to be here?
We've kind of given the onus to the Youth and Family Service, and then, you know, if she determines this, this person qualifies, then, then, and, you know, she, and the background that she gives, they meet the criteria, then we, we say, yep, good to go.
Chief Cassidy, I'll recognize you, I think you might have some points to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Alfred, with regards to your question, and with regards to the unique nature of this being administered per se by a nonprofit, as I research the rent and mortgage relief programs that have been going on around the country, because the CARES Act is a federal program, and each of the 50 states and principalities, municipalities around the, the country got the same marching orders from the federal legislation, there were several jurisdictions around the country that did delegate the administration of rent, mortgage, and/or utility relief to nonprofits. If you look at what's happening in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the majority of the rent, mortgage relief programs are administered through, depending on which county you're in, organizations such as a United Way. So what we're proposing here is not unprecedented, and it's, it's passed the muster throughout the country. So that's one of the reasons that I was quite comfortable with this arrangement.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Dan.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I just took two days, I'm not saying it's unprecedented or it's not, you know, I just want to make sure that the legal guardrails are, are set up in place, and that, you know, it was sort of one of my, you know, larger sort of concerns there. But that is, as long as those things are being taken into account, and Jackie's, you know, there's more of a, of a strict, strict sort of who's going to be able to apply and how much, it sounds like a, a great program.
Anything else regarding the proposal for the Youth and Family Services to receive funding from the CARES Act for rent and mortgage relief? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion from the board to approve $25,000, or up to $25,000 to be transferred to the Youth and Family Services for the program described herein.
I'll make that motion with a comment.
Please go ahead.
I'd also like to just make sure that once the processes are finalized, that the board gets a chance to review those as well. So I will make that motion with that comment.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any comments?
None.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. That carries. Jackie, thanks a lot. John, thanks so much for your work and help on this.
Thank you, Jackie.
We appreciate it. Good luck and stay in touch.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
We'll move on in our agenda to the warrant. Mr. Sparrow.
All right, so we have one warrant. The amount is $1,889,062.27, so I make a motion to approve a warrant for that amount.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a comment and a question on that. When we approve these warrants, Chief, do they, would they include any expenditures associated with the CARES Act? Should those be delineated out in the weekly warrant?
Yes, they are. I capture them in the following week's report. So once you approve the warrant and it gets posted to UNIS.
We'll catch you in a week.
I extract the information once it's, it's posted in UNIS, and then it comes to your weekly report.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. That carries. Public comments, Mr. Sparrow.
I have two public comments. So the first one is, is. Last, last Tuesday, we had the Lowland Street Public Forum, and I wanted to say thank you to all the residents that came out. We had, what was it, 113 at peak, peak capacity, and, but I particularly wanted to, so thank the residents for coming out, but I really wanted to thank some people in this room and in this building who really worked very hard to make that happen. I want to thank our town administrator, Travis, I want to thank the Fire Chief, Chief Cassidy, Karen Sherman, for the work that they did, and I really want to thank Chris Mayo for making it look very smooth and easy. So thank you to Chris, who's our technology director. He really made it, made it, made it work, so he made John look good, because John handled himself well trying to handle all those, those people. So that's the first thing. The second comment I have is kind of personal, so, so if some of you might know, my wife is a school administrator in the town of Needham, and she basically worked every day this summer trying to get ready for school, and they started piecemeal going back. So I just wanted to say that I really appreciate all the work that she's doing. You know, our son is going, he's only in daycare, he's not quite in school yet, but it's, it's an incredible amount of work that went in this past summer from the, from our schools, from the school committee, working tirelessly to get through, to figure out something that's difficult, if not impossible, to understand. And I just wanted to say thank you to all the school administrators, the school committee, these teachers, aides, who put in an enormous amount of work, and they're starting to go back and the fruits of their labor to try to make a safe and good environment for our kids to go back to. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of them. So that's, that's all I got. So thank you.
Ben, Tina?
Yeah, so I was not going to have a public comment, but Ben has inspired me. I would just say that often people say, my goodness, how hard do you work for the, for, as a volunteer elected official, and I can tell you that I don't work nearly as hard as those individuals currently serving on the school committee here in Holliston, as well as all of those who are on the other side of the table in terms of representing the teachers, the town adminis, the school administrators, and so on. I'm overly impressed and cannot imagine the daunting task before you, and just like we saw a few minutes ago with the passing of the approval, rather, of the rent and mortgage relief, this is a community that comes together for the benefit of all, and I appreciate the efforts that are ongoing now, and I look forward to a September 16 start date. I have full faith in all of those who are involved in all the negotiations and every aspect of it, including Chief Cassidy, who's here in the room, who's been at the side of the schools every step of the way, and I, with deep gratitude that I thank you for the work that you've been doing for the past, I don't know, since March 3rd.
About 100 years ago.
Yeah, again, thank you very much.
Thanks, Tina. I have a brief update, similar to Ben's, regarding the Lowland Industrial Park hearing conducted last week. I think we informed people, it was the largest Zoom call the town has endured to date, 113 people joined us. We heard from over a couple of dozen residents, loud and clear, about the conditions that they live in, and they have to endure for quite some time, in some cases, years. The message was received, loud and clear. As I said at the conclusion of that meeting last week, we, we have some work to do. I see some residents on our call tonight, and I've continued to receive emails, as I'm sure each of you have. We encourage our residents to stay in close touch with us, as well as our commercial partners up at the Lowland Industrial Park. As we move forward with the solution, I think you'll all understand, this is not a simple solution. It's going to involve multiple layers of collaboration, both with the state, some local officials, and finally with individuals associated with that area. We understand something's got to change, the status quo is no longer acceptable. We understand residents have had years and years of frustration. Our goal is not to exacerbate that or add to it, but rather offer our best effort to come to a solution that works for most people. This will involve some type of a balance between the Lowland Industrial Park commercial users and the surrounding residents, but this evening, I just want to let folks know, over the next couple of months, through our town administrator, we'll be working very diligently to come up with an action plan. administrator, we'll be working very diligently to come up with an action plan. You likely won't hear from us directly on a regular basis on that, but you, you should know that we are working diligently towards a solution. And when we're ready to offer some information to share with you about those milestones, uh, we will do so without delay. Uh, are there any questions from folks on the call about that? I do know some joined us, so I want to give them a voice if they have anything to say. Hearing none. Okay. The other item I was going to point out at, uh, the end of the evening, but I might as well mention it now in case, uh, folks are listening. Uh, tomorrow is a state primary day. We'd encourage folks to get out and vote. Uh, if they haven't taken advantage of the mail-in vote process, you can go up to the high school at 7:00 AM, up to 8:00 PM tomorrow evening and cast your ballot. Uh, we hope you take advantage of your, your right to do so. We will now move on to the next item on our agenda involving comments from the town administrator Travis.
Thank you very much. Actually, my first one here was from the clerk's office about the voting tomorrow. So just to reiterate, uh, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Holliston High School, 370 Hollis Street. Um, the next was going to be Lowland Street. I think you both hit on that, but I'll just, uh, reference again. 113 people, 29 calls were taken, 26 individuals with three individuals who were brought back at the end, uh, for their final thoughts, which was, uh, an excellent night, a lot taken. Um, and I would just reiterate again, I won't be bringing piecemeal updates necessarily as we go forward, um, but looking to, to bring a fully formed action plan to the board, uh, hopefully around the timeline of the end of September. Um, looking, uh, for solutions from public safety, highway, mass DOT, planning, zoning, and town council, who have all been looped in, um, many of which were actually on the call as well. Um, and so that, uh, just again, to reiterate what was already said, thank you so much to everybody on that call. It was, um, it was very well run by the moderator, the chair of the board, and, um, Chris Mayo. So thank you to everybody. Um, next up, I just want to follow along with a facilities, um, uh, the, the doors of town hall, uh, I think I've updated a couple of times. This has been bid twice, um, and it has been rebid and those bids are due September 16th and I am, uh, determined, uh, that that will be a successful bid process. Um, and more to come on that, but I, I think based on our, uh, our follow-up from the last unsuccessful bid, um, we have corrected what needed to be corrected and, uh, we believe that there will be interest this time. So, uh, September 16th at 10:00 AM, bids are due. Um, one more thing, this is more of a sort of follow-up on a number of different grants throughout town, uh, in different stages. As we all know, the shared streets and spaces grant was submitted. Um, we are expecting to hear back on that by the end of this week. Um, any day now is a, is a quote that I received. Uh, the next one is one that we, uh, put in today based on the board's vote last week. Um, there was, uh, a letter signed on behalf of the board as you all voted by the chair. Um, in addition to that, uh, from the, the board's, uh, submittal was also, um, support letters from the trails committee, um, Robert Wiedneck, uh, Karen Sherman on behalf of the planning board, uh, Jackie Weiner on behalf of Family Youth and Services, who's, um, contingent maybe involved in, in sort of doing some of the work related to the grant, uh, the conservation commission, the Friends of the Holliston Trails, and the fire chief. Um, so there's a lot of interest in this, in this MAPC grant that you all voted last week. So we're very hopeful and that did go in today before the 3:00 PM deadline. And then finally, I should have for you next week, um, final information on the Green Communities announcement, about $170,000. We're expecting a couple of details. We're still trying to iron out before we can, uh, make the announcement, but we expect a, a good news on that front and I'll be bringing that to you shortly. So that's three different grants in different stages. Um, that's where we are. And then the last update would be the next Monday night, when we would normally meet is Labor Day. We're currently on the schedule for Tuesday unless I hear otherwise from, um, the select board on that. So we would be 9:08 Tuesday night instead of 9:07, which is Labor Day. And that's all I have for right now.
Thank you, Travis. Any questions for the town administrator?
Just a quick one. Could you just name the MAPC grant?
The name of the grant.
Well, just what do we, what was the title we gave it when we submitted it? It was for the forest.
Oh, it is a, it is a tree survey, I believe.
Thank you. That's what I thought. Okay.
And it is, it's one of those grants that if, if we're not sort of the ones pursuing it, the work, you know, will not get done. But I think I, I sort of laid out all of the sustainability reasons that this is, um, it's a grant that touches on a number of things and that's why there was so much interest.
Youth and Family Services.
In those letters of support.
That's great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Any other comments, questions for the town administrator from those assembled? Hearing none. We will move on to the capital policy discussion. Um, folks may know that over the last couple of weeks, we have, um, waited for some feedback, um, on potential edits to a policy that had been approved by the board, um, back on May 20, 2019. The capital, uh, policy, capital request policy has been used by this board to assist various town departments and understand the process by which items for inclusion in the town warrant may be considered. As a result, um, we had some issues with the school committee come up this past spring, uh, working with them. We advised that we could make some adjustments to the policy to affect their calendar. Um, their calendar is very rigid in the spring and we did not want them to be beholden to our calendar. So with deference to our needs, uh, we've worked out a solution to give them some flexibility to cooperate. Following that, our new member, Mr. Sparrell, had some thoughts that he wanted to, uh, explore with the finance committee. So I think this evening we want to give you a chance to, uh, feed us any updates that you might have for us. Ben?
Uh, sure. Uh, so, um, Travis and I, uh, had a conversation with the, uh, reformed capital subcommittee, um, of the finance committee. Uh, reformed because I was on that committee and it's very difficult for me to still be on it since I am no longer on the finance committee. So, um, they've reorganized with, uh, Mr. Maxwell as the new chair, um, of this particular subcommittee. And I wanted to hear their feedback and their input on where they can fit into the process here. Not, not to say that it's necessarily to hijack it, um, from our process. It's, it is our, uh, process that we're talking about, but at this, but to have them be able to, um, be included in, um, in, in the actual, the text of it so that way we, it's clear where they fit in, where they're getting information and how it's being, um, sent to the finance committee and that subcommittee. So, um, basically the, 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 most of the change was really at the beginning of the process, uh, around, roughly 60 days out, that, um, as, um, submissions are sent to the town administrator, he will share some of those, submit, those submissions with that, uh, capital subcommittee, just so they're kind of aware of like what's in the pipeline. So they kind of know what's out there and what's, what's coming up. Um, and then, um, we can engage our part of the process and then towards the end, then things will be shared with the finance committee after we've approved, um, what we see as the, uh, the capital, uh, needs for the town for the, for the particular warrant that we are in discussion about.
The prioritized list.
Exactly. Um, so that was really, you know, that's, that, that's really the only substantive changes, um, to the document that have been made.
Can you walk us through specifically on your doc where those changes were made, Ben?
Sure.
Against the version that was provided?
Uh, let me, uh, sure.
Is it the asterisk?
The asterisk I put in as a, um, note that we will work with the, um, school committee's, um, annual budget calendar.
You'll have to just forgive me one second while I just hold together both of the documents so I can, like, give you specifics. And I'm happy to share this with you, um, if you want to see it specifically.
So while we're pulling that up, um, I would just say two months before town meeting of, of 10:26 would have been last Thursday. Um, and so by that point, I have, I have talked to most boards, committees, and, um, department heads through the boards and committees, um, or sort of the other way around, sorry. Uh, department heads, um, and then also looped in any boards and committees that, that discussed those with the department heads before they get to, um, the town administrator on, uh, updates to the capital needs, um, related to the spreadsheet that was referenced before that was generated originally from the Collins Center. Um, and so I have all of this sort of information on, on any changes that need to be made with that document going forward on, on where, um, department heads and their boards and committees, uh, are now as, as opposed to when that was originally put together.
All right.
And then the next date would be 45 days. It says, we'll recommend to the select board. That would be 9/11 is 45 days before, um, October 26th.
Thank you.
So, uh, right out of the gate, I'll, well, not right out of the gate, but with remote participation and with the call from the original order from the governor to do essential business only, there are going to be some committees that really haven't met on a regular basis. What comes to mind, of course, for me is the traffic advisory committee, but there are others out there. Um, the Blair Square Committee, it seems like they're picking up more in their meetings. Um, but there, again, are, are committees like that, I imagine. So, uh, has that been anticipated or discussed that, again, there may be some committees that because of the pandemic had postponed, held off on meeting and now maybe a little bit playing catch-up to get ready for this particular timeline, for this particular, you know, special town meeting 2020?
Sure. I would just reference one thing, which is that we have later on the agenda tonight, opening, um, the town meeting warrant. Um, and in so included in that process will begin other processes such as, um, the CPC beginning to meet.
Yeah.
And I have spoken with Frank Chamberlain.
Right.
The gentleman that we had last week, Kevin Conley on behalf of Blair Square, you know, included in his sort of marching orders where to, to make sure he's in front of the CPC, uh, and I know other individuals are, are as well. So I, I think to that point, yes, I think it's fair to say that the, all of those people have somewhat been engaged in the idea that, that this is coming.
Yep.
Okay. How'd you make out?
So, yep. So I got them both. So basically, um, just to walk you through, I didn't make any changes to the, um, background or the policy description. Um, but what I did change is, so for number one, um, originally it included, uh, sharing with the town administrator and the finance committee and that language I think should be changed to just, it comes to Travis exclusively. It comes to the town administrator and then he's the one who shares it with the finance committee. Um, that would be number two. He shares it with the, uh, capital improvement committee, a subcommittee of the finance committee, uh, that's, once he has collected all of the sort of the, the raw data, he's going to share it with them for their, uh, for, for them to be able to review and have some input. Um, the sharing of the recommendation, um, moved up to about 45 days. That gives him about two weeks from, um, it, you, we can correct if this is, if this should be changed, but I was saying that, you know, the town administrator should make the, um, recommendations around 45 days before, um, the, uh, town meeting. That would give you two weeks to do that after collecting the information. And then, um, we would, that would give us some time if we wanted a week or two to mull it over, talk about it, get some more information, ask any other questions, to be able to share within, um, approximately 30 days before town meeting with the finance committee for them to do.
So you, you altered number two from the version you were given?
Yes.
It had read, "The town administrator will schedule a meeting with the select board for the purposes of reviewing your capital needs."
Mm-hmm.
"This will be done at least 45 days before the town meeting."
Mm-hmm.
We're getting rid of that and we're replacing it with?
No, actually, we're, um, it's actually moved to number four. "The town administrator may schedule a meeting with the select board for the purpose of reviewing a department's capital needs at the discretion of the select board, the town administrator, and the department manager." So maybe a department manager might ask to come before us to talk about something or there might be particular occasions where, um, it might not be necessary. I think I was, uh, what I was trying to add was a little bit of discretion, um, in the, the wording so that way it wasn't mandatory they had to come, but there could be, you know, there might be, so we might have questions where we say, "We'd really like to meet with them" or that, you know, you might, Travis might say, you know, "What, it's a smaller thing? Here's the quote." You know, we might, we might say, "We're good." It just, I wanted to add a little bit of discretion to the oper-, to, to the, the, the process so that way it's not just simply, "Let's schedule 20 meetings," um, depending on the nature of the capital. That's, that's all I put in there for.
From your time, if I may?
Yeah, please go.
From your time on the, uh, finance committee with capital requests, are departments making, as they do with their operating budget, are they making a regular, um, uh, time to meet with the finance committee? Cause that's not addressed here. I, I like what you're saying.
No, because this is our policy. This is our policy.
Right. No, I understand.
Um, so, um, I think one of the things that I wanted, you know, from my experience in the finance committee is basically whenever people had requests, it was usually asked of them to come before the finance committee to explain them. Um, one of the things that I think is important that we need to do in this process is to make sure that, um, the information that's been given to Travis is consistent with what the finance committee's going to ask for as much as possible within reason. So that way, if there's particular things like, I'm making it up, you know, is it a replacement or, you know, if there's questions, uh, there was a document that the finance committee was working on, um, that was going to ask certain questions or sort of like standard questions. If we can get them answered earlier in the process, we might not, we might, uh, reduce the, the need for duplication of efforts for certain individuals. They're not going to have to provide one document to the, to the select board and then a different document or additional documentation to the finance committee. We want to make sure that they only have to basically submit something to Travis and then if there's questions, they can have them, but they're not trying to do two submissions in effect.
All right.
It was an overwhelmed, uh, it was an overblown, overanswer of what you were saying.
Well, now at the risk of beating this thing over the head.
No, it's okay.
Until it's, you know, just done. Um, take me through, I'm going to, because it's here, it's called out, take me through the school committee's request for, let's say, 100 new Chromebooks. That historically, a recent time, has been a capital request, if my memory's serving me right. So insert them, please, into this process. Um, at, do they go before the finance committee to make their request?
Yes.
And when they do?
They would, they would go in front of the finance committee to make their request.
Where am I seeing that here in the capital policy?
You are not. Cause I don't, I mean, honestly, I don't really know how that happens in, in this particular, it's not to say that they shouldn't talk to us about it. I think, going back to what we were talking about before with respect to collaboration and the discussion of what everybody's looking at and thinking about, I think it should be part of the process. And I'm sure the implication of providing the, providing the data to the town administrator should include the schools. The implication is, is that they, I'm, I'm sure they're, you know, he's working closely with them to get that information. Um, but we have deference to the school committee budget development calendar. How they fit into this, I, you know, I mean, we're basically-
To be clear, Ben didn't make a change that took any of that out. That was not in the, the, that's not a change that Ben made.
Sure, sure.
Okay.
And I'm not really sure how we can do that.
We shouldn't.
I agree.
We shouldn't. It's not our purview.
No, it's not.
However, the warrant is our purview and if you want to be in the warrant, you want to capitalize them in the warrant, you have to come through us. That's how it's written. Do you agree?
Um, I think, you know, and, uh, cause I hear from this board that that is the case and I hear from the schools that they don't. I've heard through the grapevine. I don't know necessarily. And I'm not saying, I'm not-
No, to be clear, let's put that, let's, let's put that on the table. That was the gist of the discussion I had with Ann Louise this past May and June.
Yes.
Um, she had, um, expressed some misgivings that were drifting into the legal world.
Yes.
Um, I deferred comment on that and asked her to have the school's attorney collaborate with our, our council. They did.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Talaman explained to me that he, he gave clear notice to the school's attorney on what the select board's role is in this role and it was basically black and white. There, there wasn't any room for the schools to really move around that, that role and that authority that the select board has controlling the warrant. So there, there aren't any changes to the, to the policy to reflect the schools', uh, preferences other than the calendar because I think we have to protect the authority given to us to manage the warrant. So as far as I'm concerned, the, the select board has that authority and we, we should use it.
Well, I, I, um, I see where you're coming from. I would just sort of back up a little bit of the language and thinking that it should be, the capital process should be a collaborative effort between the boards is my opinion about it. I think it should be an opportunity for us to have a conversation somewhere in this process where we can say, even if it's a tribe board's meeting in, um, if this is an October meeting and this is a normal year, in June, here's our priorities, here's your priorities. And we all kind of understand where everybody's coming from. And it's, to me, it's a data sharing exercise as opposed to, um, looking at it as control of the warrant. And I, I see your point and I understand where you're coming from with it. I just, I, I would like to see it as a collaborative sharing exercise between the boards.
I think in a perfect world, in all cases, you're, you're right. Collaboration has to be the heartbeat of all public, um, deliberation. Doesn't always work that way.
No, that's true.
Um, and I mentioned that to Ann Louise, that, you know, while we do collaborate quite well with the- well with the schools, there may come a time when the collaboration is not as fine.
Mm-hmm.
You need a policy that clearly defines the roles. Don't fall back on the, on the expression "to collaborate." You have to give the authority where it rests and direct individuals to follow that path. In other words, these policies have to outlive whatever existing collaboration is in place. It has to give the path to the respective boards and the authorities that have it, how to carry out their role.
But do you think there's a, there's a, could be an effort that there's too much codification of process, that doesn't leave enough wiggle room for, for things to sort of coexist?
Well, if I can jump in, John.
Go for it.
I'm going to come back to the questions that we got from the governance committee that we answered an hour and a half ago. And it's, this has always felt like sticking a square peg in a round hole to me with this capital policy, and I feel like the governance committee is on to it. I, I feel like they're identifying that the process, in that they're asking, should also have a capital planning committee, in that they're asking, when does the school committee submit it? So I think they're referring specifically to operating budget, but you can't tell. But they're, I think they're noticing, and they're wanting some clarification, and they're, they're seeing this as something to pick up. So I, I don't feel like we have a policy right now. If we're, we've been talking about this since I joined the board.
Yep.
This issue.
Well, there was no policy before May of 19.
Yeah. Ben, I like the changes that you've made. I feel like we don't have a policy that, where you have, and I'm not picking on the schools, I'm not, but I think that they are, again, from my experience, they're a solid 50, if not 75% of the capital requests that we've, that I've seen since my time on the board. And if we have a policy that doesn't specifically outline in clear terms, and that everybody agrees with, sure, that's a goal. But if we don't have a policy that does that, if we can't look at the policy that we have in front of us today and say, "And this is where the schools fit in," we have 75% or 50% or whatever, it ends up being a large amount of our capital.
Right.
Not.
Well, Mike, I, I agree with you, but my concern is if we make it too rigid, they wind up opting out of it. And I, and I want, I, my concern is, is that if we make it rigid and we, and they opt out of it, then we have concurrent processes.
Yeah.
And then I think that takes away some of our opportunity for, to make decisions, and it puts them in other circles to make those choices for us. And I don't think that's, I think we have to be careful not to overplay our hands, if you will, with this policy and wind up losing some of, we, we continue to have the control over the departments that are under our jurisdiction, but I just, I want to be careful that we don't overdo it and wind up kind of misplaying our hand and losing.
Did the policy that you read that was given to you on August 17th, and the one you've amended, did the one on the 17th have language in it that you thought was different to the, to the goals that you just uttered?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't, I don't necessarily feel that way. I just wanted to-
What was the risk of them opting out then?
I think it was still there.
Yeah.
I think it's still, I think it's, I think the risk is there either, in either case.
Right. The, the goal of this policy is to protect the, the select board's control of the warrant. It's as simple as that. There's, there's no way around that, and that's, that's part of our bylaw. And if you want to be in the warrant, you have to come through the select board, the, with respect to capital items. I don't find that any of the edits you've made substantially changed that.
No.
So if they, if, if any group wants to try to go outside the boundaries, they're welcome to do that. There's hazards with every choice.
Sure.
So we're not trying to create a, a policy that creates a, an ill effect. We're trying to create a policy that streamlines how capital items are assessed by the town and get included for town consideration pursuant to our bylaws. Because as Tina mentioned, prior to May of 19, there was no such policy, and it was kind of loosely interpreted, you know?
And I would argue, too, I believe this is a, I didn't really try to pursue that, but I think you made a good point when we were talking about the questions for the governance committee about having an actual capital budget. And I think one of the things that needs to be included in this, and I don't, I think now is not the time to do it, I think next year would be the time to start working on it, but I would like to see us have a capital budgeting process where we start to plan and place where things go in a bigger picture, so we actually can start, you know, when, when the chief comes to us and he needs a fire engine, it's not a giant spike in our capital, we can smooth it out as much as possible over time, so to help, to help mitigate that, and to build more of a budget process as opposed to just reviewing proposals from departments. But that's a, that's a down-the-road item, in my opinion.
Any other thoughts, Tina, on the proposal that Ben has drafted for us for consideration?
Fully acknowledging that, I'm, I'm more than happy to have the governance committee take this up and chew this over. I, I think some, from their work, we're learning that other towns do things differently.
Sure.
And one of the pieces of information that's being shared is that in other towns, a school committee is one member of the capital improvement committee, and that the weighting of it is such that there's one member of the select board and one member of the finance committee, they are making decisions on the capital budget. I like that. I think that that gives parity, and I, my, my personal preference would be that we see a capital improvement committee before we see this policy changed in any meaningful way.
Yeah.
Sure, yeah.
I think that was your point, yeah?
Yeah, no, and I, I, you know, that's probably for a deeper discussion down the road about something like that, but, you know, I, I agree with you. I think that, you know, I think there needs to be inputs from a lot of different sources with, to how we build our capital process and create an actual capital budget and, over, to manage our infrastructure.
Yeah. I foresee those changes coming as well. Travis, any thoughts on this?
No, I would just reference again what Ben said, that we sat down with Tim, Ken, and Sue, and just sort of said, you know, I think everybody was generally on board with the idea that I'll, I'll collect this information, and that I don't want any department to feel like I would filter out that information so that it wouldn't get to the select board, but at some point between when I'm collecting it, compiling it, there is, in this two-week period in either version that we're discussing, I'm then, you know, sort of bringing a priority list as I see it to, to the select board and the finance committee in different sort of veins. And then in, in either way, you know, that is a sort of first step to make sure that everybody understands that, that there's a funnel for where capital requests go.
Sure.
I think that that's a baby step, and what you're discussing in terms of the longer term is certainly something I can help achieve as well.
And I, and I think also, just for the last thing, is that, you know, I think it's the hardest at first, because, you know, for the most part, we know unless something catastrophic happens to a capital asset that requires an immediate repair, for the most part, we know what's coming. So once you sort of have the information, okay, is everything still look okay? What do you have in year, now year five instead of year six upcoming? So it's not, the first years really work, it's a little tricky, and then it's just maintaining it over time.
I think we've had enough discussion on this.
Agreed.
Ben, the only word that bothers me, and it's not worth changing, and you've made your, your argument for it, is to give the town administrator some flexibility scheduling a meeting for the purposes of reviewing the needs. It was, the town administrator will schedule it. You've changed it to May schedule. I'm not going to quibble over that at this point. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the edits as proposed on August 27th, 2020, for the select board's policy on capital requests.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Travis, if you'd be so kind, is to bring those edits around, and I believe we'll have some signatures on that policy when it's ready for our, our thoughts. And thank you, Ben, for your work on that.
Thanks, Ben.
Well done.
You got it.
John, can I, may I make a suggestion? I don't believe we have anyone speaking on number eight, the strategic planning. I'm wondering if we could move up?
Oh, we do, we do.
As a guest, as a visitor?
Uh, oh, no.
On the call? I was just simply going to ask if we could swap eight and nine, that's all. A way of-
Oh, okay.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Take number nine out of order. So number nine on our agenda is the Constitution Village subdivision, street lighting. Mr. Ahern, would you be so kind as to introduce this issue for folks at home? And we'll then welcome our viewers and participants on the call to join us.
Sure. So in May of this year, the planning board took a vote to essentially send a question to be answered by the select board. I'm not fully sure the delay, but at this point, I was speaking with Karen Sherman to say, is there anything holding up this question on Constitution Village, question that, that planning asked for, select board feedback on, to be in front of the select board? And Karen was prepared to have the conversation, so I put it on the agenda for tonight, and then she was kind enough to write up a little memorandum for your history on the question. And then there's some information related to the May discussion that had happened as well, for your information. But I would let either Karen, or if she'd like, the, the group here from, from Constitution to speak, either one, to, to fill you in and sort of ask for you to weigh in on the, on the issue.
I'll speak in looking 40. I am the attorney for Stafford, who's a developer of Constitution Village, and we're requesting a waiver, like Travis said, of the streetlight requirement. Currently, there are streetlights on the approved plans for the subdivision, but as Karen's memo points out, the subdivision was approved so long ago that streetlights are no longer required in the town halls, or can be subject to a waiver like we're requesting today. We don't believe that streetlights are, are necessary in the subdivision, it might even constitute an eyesore, and I don't know if Karen wants to elaborate more on that, but we're, we're requesting the waiver of the streetlights from the approved plan.
Sorry, could, Karen, could you just sort of summarize a little bit? I know, sort of, where the planning board left off and the handoff from the planning board to the select board, I think that would be helpful.
Sure. So this is kind of a unique situation where the, the planning board is asking you to insert yourselves in the, in the subdivision process. This is an active subdivision, not a subdivision that's wrapping up that will come to you shortly for road acceptance. This is sort of in the middle of construction. So this issue of streetlights, just as a, more in the way of background, what's happening in the subdivision through the memorandum of agreement that the board has with Stafford is that essentially parts of the subdivision roadway system is being reconstructed. There were some structural issues, and so sort of guiding the process is this memorandum. But the devil's in the details, so one of the details is street lighting. Again, I think the planning board would defer to you as a policy issue. You certainly have the street lighting budget under your control. As a policy issue, it would be part of the street acceptance process where, given the utility companies' changes in policy, the way that they do straight, street lighting, the board would need to commit contractually to have the streetlights installed ultimately, and then to absorb them into the system and pay the bill. So thinking that it was more like a policy issue, the planning board opted to send this your way. There is a planning board process to deal with this if you felt like it needed a more formal process. There is a formal modification process under the subdivision control law if you wanted the abutters to be noticed. But they're looking for feedback from you. It was one of those, it is an action item that should be addressed before they, before Stafford folks come back to the planning board to reestablish the construction deadline and scheduling for 2021.
And those timelines, I think, November of 22, November of this year has a deadline, and then, and then the, the one you just referenced is next year, November 2021, is that right?
Yep.
Okay.
Any questions, Mr. Sparrow?
About 10,000 of them.
10,000? We'll start with the first one.
So I guess, like, you know, you'll have to forgive me as I'm being, coming into this process, and just trying to understand, so as I understand this, Karen, you know, you're looking to us to, to sort of give you feedback on our policy with respect to street lighting in general, and, or it's not necessarily specific to this, but just looking as a general policy? Is that kind of what we're, we're talking about here?
From my perspective, it would be for, for both. So specifically for this particular number of streetlights that are being proposed within this subdivision. So essentially, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, Angela, the total number of lots now, 54 lot subdivisions?
Yes, I believe 54 or 55.
Yeah, it is. And then just in general, certainly there is a cost per light that you would need to figure into your budget, so Donna, and I did do a little bit of research, and kudos to you, Donna, sitting in the audience, I think. I think there are 910 streetlights or something like that currently, and that roughly the cost per month is $4 to $5 per month for each streetlight. And I'm not sure how many are being proposed within this subdivision, but there are also the number of lights within the other Stafford subdivision that would need to be brought into the system as well.
Donna informs, informs me, Karen, it's 9:20, but-
Eight.
Ben, do you have number, do you have question number two of 10,000?
Why don't I let you two ask a couple of questions first?
Sure, Tina, any questions?
A couple. So I'm hearing you say, Karen and Donna, that right now, the town at 920 streetlights is paying around $3,500 a month, and that we're talking about adding around 50 or so, at this point in time, additional streetlights? Is that sort of where we are on cost? Because that's not information that I have here in my agenda packet, is the cost of these additional streetlights. Are we looking at adding about 50 streetlights at, what did you say, $45 a month?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you're also saying that the planning board can, can use a formal process by which is a public hearing. I, I can't help but wonder if that doesn't address Ms. Conforti's comment about residents and abutters may, may perceive an eyesore? That seems relevant to any decision. And then the other question I have is, coming back to the materials you supplied, Karen, there's a May 12th memo. It's written from you, and I believe it was sent to Attorney Conforti. There's one part, one thing that jumped out at me right away, which is to say that Mr. Perand, who will complete an inspection of the site as an agent for the planning board on or before September 10th to identify needed repairs and areas of stabilization. I don't know where that stands. I feel like that's relevant information for, perhaps not policy, but certainly the general issue in front of us.
So Ali is charged with the sort of keeping the construction process on track. He just got through a series of checklist inspections. He works with the assigned project engineer from Gary or Hellman, who's representing Stafford. And so the construction crews work through the project engineer and then to Ali. His September schedule for sort of housekeeping issues doesn't really, isn't really relevant to this-
Okay.
-issue of street lighting.
Okay. Okay.
This is Jim Sullivan from Gary or Hellman. Could I speak on, yeah?
Please, Mr. Sullivan, go right ahead.
Yep, good evening. In Karen's memo, she references that the last subdivision approved with lighting was probably, so there's two subdivisions we're speaking about, that, of Stafford and their entities, the Highland subdivision and then Constitution Village, but speaking with Constitution Village. So that subdivision is still only about half done or so, as Karen described. The, the town typically does not have lights on new developments at this point, as Karen described. Well, 2001 might have been the last time you approved a subdivision that had lights, that is what Karen has in her memo. But what we talked about with the planning board was the fact that this subdivision is still ongoing, and we're looking basically to, to gain agreement that if you don't want subdivisions typically in your, if you don't want streetlights typically in your subdivisions, at some point going forward, that seems to be what was decided. at some point going forward, that seems to be what was decided. And in this case, we're kind of looking for that understanding and then either a waiver or relief, whatever's appropriate for the Constitution Village subdivision that is again currently ongoing.
Understood. Thanks, sir. Tina, any other questions?
There is.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
There is the other half of the subdivision called, a different subdivision called Highlands. They're right next door to each other. That has streetlights in it and those streetlights are half done and I guess I don't really want to muddy it too much, but they're two separate discussions. Again, Constitution Village is a subdivision and the Highlands is a subdivision and I could speak to both at some point, but I don't want to make it. I provided Travis with a number of pieces of information on the Highlands and Angela provided a memo and a quest for a discussion on Constitution Village, so they're two different discussions. I have some plans if you wanted them, but the old side of the subdivision, if you would, is the Highlands and the ongoing newer side is Constitution Village.
Thank you for that distinction, Mr. Sullivan. Would you be so kind for the viewers at home to identify the streets in the Constitution Village that are in play with this light issue?
Sure. In Constitution Village, it's Old Cart Path, it's Minuteman Circle, Mohawk Path, and a portion of the.
Not Mohawk. Not Mohawk Path.
Sorry, Hyawatha Trail. Sorry, my reading is getting difficult at the end. And then a portion of Governor Prince. I'm looking at a plan that you're not seeing. That's why my head is turning, but. So those are the streets. Again, Old Cart Path, Hyawatha Trail, a portion of Governor Prince, and Minuteman Circle. That is the Constitution Village subdivision.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Tina, do you have any other questions?
No, I have comments, but no more questions.
Ben, before I go, do you have any quick ones or?
No, I'm good.
Okay. So a couple of questions for me, if I could. One has immediate relevance. The other one is connected to an old issue. Karen, through your board, have you heard from any residents who live in this area about their interest in having streetlights in their community?
Not specifically within Constitution, but in Highlands, many of the residents had expressed an interest in having streetlights.
It would seem to me that that's the missing link here, that these are residents who had an expectation, I think when they purchased a home, to have some kind of street lighting in their neighborhood. If any decision is made to, as Mr. Sullivan indicated, to offer relief to Fafford, I would be remiss if I didn't include the residents in that decision. I think we need to make a very concerted effort to reach out to them and get their overall opinion on that, on that matter. From there, everything else flows. My second question, and I'm going to be looking for you, Karen, for some help because it's a vague recollection, but it's come up a couple of times and it has nothing to do with lights. Attorney Conforti, forgive me for bringing in something that has nothing to do with lights, but I wanted to bring your attention to something that we heard loud and clear from residents up in the Fafford area, that there were certain covenants or reasons why their children could not assemble at bus stops that were close to their residence. Bus stops, excuse me, buses from the town of Holliston don't navigate into Constitution Village. And for that matter, I'm not sure if they go to Highland, but let's just speak about Constitution. We had a large assembly, very large assembly of residents here, probably a year ago, maybe more, concerning this issue. And a lot of it went back, Karen, to some of the undone work that Fafford had on its bond with the, with the town. We encourage people to reach out to Fafford and find out what is being done to clear those issues. Can you give us, Karen, can you give us an update this evening on those matters? Because while we have Fafford here, and again, I apologize for bringing in something that's outside the boundaries of lighting, but while we have you here and you're asking us for something, I wanted to draw your attention to something that was very meaningful to many residents. And if Karen could give us an update, I would appreciate it.
Sure. So I think the residents that were primarily in front of the, of your board, John, were Highland and Holliston folks that were part of the homeowners association. Essentially, half of the roads within that development are public, so buses do have several centralized stops on the public ways. There are a huge number of children that are using buses within that development. Constitution Village, you are correct, there is no busing within that subdivision. So essentially, there is 3,000 linear feet of Old Cart Path that folks are either driving their children to the centralized bus stop or walking, as well as the other three streets that Jim mentioned that are internal to that subdivision.
Do we still have matters, do we still have matters open with Fafford to have them achieve closure so that the streets can be accepted by the town of Holliston?
Okay, so for Highlands, I would say we're sort of, what would you say, Jim, 98% or something like that?
Yes.
So several of the streets could come to you as soon as this fall. There are two substantial items that would prevent all of the streets coming. One is on Mohawk Path with regard to drainage, and then the other is on Mayflower Landing with regard to streetlights. Within Constitution, there are no streets that will be ready to come forward in 2020 and likely not in 2021.
What are some of the barriers to that, if I may ask?
In Constitution, the roads are being, will be rebuilt essentially, and they will need to overwinter.
Right. And there's ongoing sales in house construction sales in Constitution Village. The Highlands is done, been done for a while and we're, we're trying to get some of that even on the fall warrant, as Karen mentions, provided we cover a couple of these items.
Jim, Angela, have you heard from these homeowners?
We heard from the homeowners a while back, pre-COVID.
Yes.
I'm guessing, I don't know if it was the January timeframe or when it was, honestly, but.
Around March, yeah.
Yeah, right before COVID then. We heard from those homeowners about drainage and, you know, there's a homeowners association. They had concerns with some drainage being not done to an approved satisfaction and several sections of the drainage that Karen and other town folks didn't want to take over for their reasons. My point is, yes, we have heard from them about that in particular, but also at all about trying to get the streets accepted so that they can be, buses going in there. And as Karen has made me aware, you know, you, you don't have buses running on, on approved streets and the, your town school select superintendent makes decisions associated with that. So in the Highlands, we're now looking to close out these, these two items, as Karen talked about, the drainage and the streetlights. So if I may, so Constitution Village, we're looking for a waiver of the lighting. In the Highlands, I provided Travis information about looking for agreement to do the lighting, but we need to do the lighting after the streets are approved because of the Eversource policy. That, that policy of Eversource, saying they put lights up on approved streets, goes against the guidelines that you folks have accepted, associated with approving streets foregoing the town meetings. So there's a conflict there. And some of the paperwork I gave Travis is a potential way to get around that so we can get the Highland lights, Highlands lights done. Constitution lights, sort of separate, looking for not to do lighting there. And it's, as far as the priority, if you would, the Highlands, you know, we'd like to try to get these streets to town meeting this fall. You know, we're right up against it now. I mean, I started with the prior town administrator and we just never got before you, but, but here we are.
So just make one point. The reason we have Constitution on here tonight is the planning board is essentially looking for the select board feedback, right? And there wasn't necessarily, I'm not sure why Jeff didn't bring that forward, but at some point, the planning board needs feedback from you. So that's the one that is on the agenda tonight. The Highlands conversation can certainly be had when the warrant is open and we're having those conversations and you'll be able to ask questions on that and see if you agree with Mr. Sullivan at that point. For this one, for this evening, what we put on was Constitution because at some point the planning board needs an answer on what the select would like.
My thinking at this point is the town, with respect to our friends at Fafford, thank you for joining us, is to leverage whatever we can to achieve the residents' goals up in that neighborhood. If that's lighting, if that's bus stops, let's work towards that goal. I think it starts, Karen, with a very public process to welcome the residents specifically to provide their input on, on that item before any next step is taken. That would be my recommendation. Ben, did you, on the interest of time, want to pass along any other remarks to our friends tonight?
No, I do agree with you. I think it might be a good idea to have a public forum where the residents can chime in and indicate their, how they, what they would like to do. And we could get these issues all resolved as quickly as possible and put all of these issues on the table and let's just, let's move forward so we can finalize these.
Tina, any final thoughts?
I think that this is a public safety question, which we can answer at another time if we're not going to make a decision tonight. I think there's a cost piece of it, so it's compelling that, that that's an aspect to this, but I agree with both John and Ben that public comment is necessary. And I would argue that, given how well Zoom has been working out for all of us, the fact that the pandemic is actively going on and we cannot meet in person should not prevent gathering large groups to provide public comment and have discussion on these issues. So I'm in agreement with John and Ben.
We do have a question, Jim and Angela, from a member of our finance committee who's on our call this evening. Ben, would you like to ask you a question, please?
Sorry, yes. Well, my only question or suggestion is, would they, would they be willing to put up some sort of bond or money so that if it goes down the line and we actually don't get the lights? Because as we know, the whole development up there has been in place for many years and it's still not accepted, some of those streets. So we have the residents, as John was pointing out, that the kids can't even get picked up outside the houses. So it's a question of acceptance of the streets. So if the town says, okay, we're going to pass on the streetlights because we understand the predicament you're in with the Eversource, we, the developer, put up some sort of bond or money to, to make sure it actually gets done.
There is currently.
Sure, I can answer that if you like. So it might be best if, if we have a future meeting to talk about the Highlands a little more in depth because that's, I believe what you're asking about for the, for the buses. We have proposed a bond. We have proposed a memorandum of understanding that if you allow these to be put up after the, the streets are accepted, there's a memorandum of understanding that I penned as a, as a starting point. There's a bond that we are willing to put up for that work that's associated with that, again, after the streets, after the streets were accepted. You know, working hand in hand with the Eversource and I believe, you know, our client working with you folks in the town, yes, yes, a bond would go up and yes, I think we could work together to get to the, to the end and get the lights up and streets accepted in the Highlands.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Ben, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
So I think in consensus, Karen, you have what I think you need to take to your board as a next step. We encourage you to turn it around and bring it back to us if you need any clarification or further action. I really want to thank Angela and Jim for coming in tonight. I know it's a late night on a Monday. Thank you, thank you, thank you. We appreciate your participation. Please keep the residents in mind up there. I know they're customers to you, but they're, they're residents and citizens to us and their interests are the most important here. So thanks so much for your help on this.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which we took out of order, number eight, strategic planning for DPW articles. I'd ask Travis, Ben, to work towards carving out some time because we'd spoken, I think when you joined our board, the board about some goals. And as you probably know, this board has invested some time and energy over the last year or so on various DPW articles. I remember working with you on some of them when you were on the finance committee. And now that you're liaison to the Department of Public Works, this evening, I thought we'd give you the opportunity to give us some insight on how you envision bringing forth a strategy to work with the stakeholders on getting ready for fall town meetings. So if you'd like to give us some insight?
Sure.
Please do so.
Okay, so I'm going to, so there's four studies at play, if, to anybody who's not aware. We're talking about a sidewalk study, a water sourcing study, DPW facility study, and a water pipe replacement study. So I've, I, right now I have a meeting with two members of the finance committee, Vin Murphy and Michelle Zimer, on Wednesday with Travis. We're going to start going through to figure out how to make these studies ready for primetime. I'm looking at it in sort of a two-pronged approach. And basically, the first thing is, is I want to make sure the studies are, people are comfortable with the content of the actual study and what's, what they're actually trying to achieve and that's particular to the text within them. And then I want to look towards putting them into a strategic plan for the town. So I think there's two steps and two stages to that. And basically, I want to work with the finance, those finance committee members to get, to start laying that groundwork. The way I'm looking at it, just to kind of go through, to go through each one of them, and this is just me, like, kind of thinking about it and stuff like that and having some conversations and some preliminary conversations. And I'm eager to hear what you two think about some of these things because I know these are both very important to both of you. So the first is, is just, I'm thinking about for October, I think one of the things that I'd really like to make sure is on the warrant is the sidewalk study. I think, you know, when we, we had the Lowland Street conversation, a lot of people were talking about traffic and truck traffic and things like that. And I think one of the ways that we can start to manage traffic is to make our town a little more walkable. And to make sure we're thinking about, you know, we have the Complete Streets grant and getting some information, some, an inventory of our sidewalks and understanding of what they are, to start trying to feed some of the information into that Complete Streets so we can start to formulate a bigger strategy on how we replace those sidewalks and put it into, into our operating budget, just like the way we have a road, a line on how to replace roads. We're thinking about sidewalks as well. Sometimes they're in conjunction, sometimes they're not, but thinking about replacing sidewalks in that sort of a sense. And that's kind of the way I was thinking about and approaching it. With water sourcing, I had a conversation with Sean Reese today and he mentioned to me that they're doing, I want to get this terminology correct. He said that they're doing a sanitary survey and they're in the process of doing it. And they're going to be doing a field survey on the 14th of September. Mass DEP is doing this survey. And one of the things that he expects them to recommend is that the town should be looking for new sources for water. Part of the challenge with water sourcing is it takes time to sort of identify it and then to put together a plan and a program to utilize that water. So it's not something, you want to be thinking about it when you have the water, not when you're desperate for it. So, you know, it's kind of an odd thing to say in the middle of somewhat of a drought, but at the same time, I think it is something that we should be looking towards and looking deeper towards. And Mass DEP is going to recommend we do so. So I think that's an important part of the October warrant as well and for these studies. With respect to the facilities.
That item could be funded by the waterfront.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I actually wasn't, yeah, you're, you're correct. And I think that is what we should be doing. With respect to the DPW facility and the water pipes replacement, I think these items are, should be part of a bigger conversation with respect to sort of the strategic infrastructure improvements in the town. And there's not a lot of runway towards October town meeting whenever, and we're working under the assumption of an October 26th town meeting. It could change, but I'm going to work under that assumption. And I think that, thinking about those facilities and the water pipes, I'd like to have more time to build a bigger strategic thinking around those particular items and presenting that at the May warrants. That is my. That is my personal, like, again, this is my personal idea. I think part of that with respect particularly to the facilities is that we're starting, we're inputting the information for Dudes Solutions and starting to formulate what we have for building assets and what our needs are and maybe starting to build some reporting and some understanding of what those programs are in terms of how to manage our buildings. And I'd like to have a little bit of time to sort of have that data, make sure that it's all ready, all, and we're thinking about it so that we're thinking about these buildings in a larger context and we're putting them all together, and the DPW facilities will be part of that. And thinking about, does, do the facilities we have meet the needs for the DPW in the future? I'd probably argue, say, probably not, but I'm not a DPW guy, so I want to make sure that we're looking at what does that look like? And that would probably be part of the study is to say, what are our needs for the future to make sure that this is, this is something that's bigger than us and it's going to be, you know, 20, 30, 40 years down the road, what does that look like for us? And making sure that we have a facility that meets those needs and making sure that we're considering that and then thinking about how does that fit into a larger context with infrastructure improvement. So that's, that's how I'm sort of approaching this at this point, but I'd love to hear both of your thoughts about what I'm thinking about. If, you know, you want to throw cold water on it, that's fine, and we can work and work together to sort of figure out other solutions if you have other ideas. Tina?
A couple of thoughts, and I'll get to the sidewalk one last. When it comes to water sourcing, I don't know enough about it. I've only first heard of it here at this table.
Oh, okay.
But the first thing that comes to my mind is, what are we doing that's complementary in terms of conservation and efficiency? I have not felt that we have a robust answer to that question or efforts underway to address that. I believe our sustainability coordinator, I will not speak for him, but I believe he would be fully supportive of any and all efforts to address conservation and efficiency within our water usage. So to that end, when it comes to water sourcing studies and so on, I would love to see and would like very much to see a parallel conversation about conservation and efficiency. I think that's critical.
Mm-hmm.
In terms of the water replacement study, I would ask, so deferring to May, I'm a little bit neutral on that. I mean, we've been asking for it for a while because I know this to be a very important infrastructure need for our community. What other progress, though, say, we waited till May, what progress can we turn around to the residents and say is being made between now and May? So I think of the treatment plant, and I think of current projects for water main replacement that will be initiated or completed before May.
There will be an article to, for some water main replacements in the October warrant as well.
Yeah.
For some substantial replacements.
I'm not comfortable signaling to residents that we're moving, we're stalling on water main replacement. There have to be many efforts that we are demonstrating to residents that we're taking water main replacement and the quality of our water and the delivery of our water seriously. So if moving to May signals to the community that we're not taking it seriously, that's a problem.
Are you, are you hearing, because, so are you hearing people saying that we need to work faster on this? But it's not here, like, because we are replacing water mains. And I, you know, moving faster is certainly, you know, a possibility, but it's also, how do we do that? And that's kind of, that becomes the challenge, hence the study, I realize, I recognize. And we are doing something, it's just, you know, if we're moving faster, how much faster we do it? And then how does that happen? And I'm not sure, I think part of what, you know, the finance committee would say is, and this is, you know, I'll put on that hat for a second because I was on that committee, is if we want to go faster, we can go faster, we could just put in more money towards it. We don't need a study to do that. That's kind of the argument, is that why do we need a study for it? And I'm not saying, let's not do the study. What I'm saying is, is that I'd like to have a better understanding how that fits into a picture. If we want to go faster, it just requires more money because that's basically the argument here is to, we're not stalling, we're just not, maybe we should be moving quicker, but how do we do that?
Where are our biggest vulnerabilities in our water main system?
Um.
In terms of the oldest that are breaking the most frequently that have been problematic? I feel like we're getting monthly reports of water mains breaking, and I know this for a variety of reasons, and I know not to be so cause and effect in what I'm saying, but I realize I am being, but can anybody, I wonder, can anybody answer that question?
It's the ACM pipe that was largely put into the community over the last 50 years.
And that's part of what's getting replaced, you know?
Yeah, yes, that's the, that's the product that's being replaced.
Right. These are the things that come to mind. I don't have answers, but--
It's okay.
That's what I think of when I think of deferring a water replacement study until May. I think about the frequent water main breaks that we're experiencing as a community that have a profound impact on those who lose water and have to live through the disruption of that, those repairs happening. I think about the treatment plant, and I think about progress on that, and I think about--
But I think, what I'm, my argument is, is that, I hear your point, and I want to fix it too, because it's, you know, we're all kind of experiencing some of the challenges, but I think we could, you know, why, you know, then the question becomes is that, why don't we just create a plan to replace the mains in a faster, you know, or address certain ones that were differently rather than doing another study? Because we did a study in 2010, 2011-ish to look at these water mains.
Okay. I hear your points, and I don't disagree. I will just move on to the DPW facility. And to that, I will say that we have heard tonight from Travis, we hear frequently about the Green Communities grant money and how that goes to updating important equipment and so on that improve our efficiency. This is a community goal, a community priority, is that we have well-run, efficient buildings and equipment within those buildings. We spend a lot of time taking care of that. And again, it's a community and a town priority. I don't think that there's anything efficient about our DPW facility, and I think that's how we address the DPW facility from my point of view, that this is something where we could see tremendous cost savings in terms of improved efficiency and so on.
Sure.
That, for me, is the most compelling, for me personally.
Yeah.
I don't think the highway is well-located in a residential community next to--
I agree.
--a water feature. That sounds silly, but you know what I mean, to see attraction in our community as well as wetlands and so on. The sidewalks, I will say this, that we need to be very clear in conversations about the sidewalk study, both internally and then also with the community, with voters and so on. The difference between the complete streets prioritization plan or needs assessment and an inventory study, there are significant differences. I won't get into the specifics, but I'm happy to share them with you because it drives different outcomes.
Sure.
So if we think that the complete streets prioritization plan, for which we were just awarded $38,000 to chase after--
Right.
--if we think that's going to get us to where we actually have a plan in place to improve sidewalks, that's incorrect thinking.
Okay.
We need that sidewalk inventory for all that it offers us to get to a place where we can say, hey, in 2024, we're going to spend X amount of dollars replacing these sidewalks because we're catching up on a backlog and we're identifying where we have the greatest need. You need the sidewalk inventory study, and I can provide you those details so you can start sharing it when you're having these conversations.
Sure, okay.
That's all. That was a lot.
That's good, thank you.
Five minutes.
Travis, excuse me, Ben, my feedback is a little bit more concise. I would argue that the sidewalk and the water pipe replacement plan need to be coupled. I've always imagined that, you know, we have a DPW because the town of Holliston recognized that when the water department opened up the street, it wasn't talking to the highway people. And that there was a synergy there, that we needed to coordinate our repair and maintenance efforts with them. The same is not true, however, with when we create better infrastructure through one mile per year of water pipe replacement. There is no plan right now that says that community, that street should get a sidewalk that is part of a plan to integrate pedestrian experience in Holliston. It is a gross oversight. It's been going on for generations. Many of the sidewalks you see today are relics of time gone by. They've been forgotten, they're not maintained, and our Public Works doesn't have the resources to do it. They need a plan to follow. So the sidewalk inventory piece that you're initiating for the fall need, I think, to be coupled with the water pipe replacement piece. I believe the well-water sourcing study and the DPW facility piece, if you had to, you know, pick any two to peel off until the spring, that's what I would do. The well-water study is one, as Sean will tell you, is done every 10 years, and it's been about 10 years since we did one. To Tina's point, I think conservation is a chronic issue, but the town needs to, from an engineering perspective, always be looking for that new source of water. Where are the aquifers moving? How do we get them to sustain our demand for the years to come? It takes a long time to get it done.
Right.
Regarding the DPW facilities at Central Street, and is it Arch or Pleasant? I always get that confused.
Arch.
Thank you.
It's Arch, yeah.
Both facilities are well beyond useful life.
Yep.
Assessments were done. As long as I'm on this board, I will not vote for any, any capital improvements for those facilities. It is a waste of taxpayers' money. If taxpayers had access to those facilities the same way they had access to schools or any other public building, they would be astonished. It is woeful how poor those conditions are. We buy hundreds of thousands of dollars' worth of equipment for use by our Public Works employees every year, and they're housed in facilities that are substandard. And as long as the town considers to ignore that, it's going to get a lot worse real fast. I did a full review of the work over the last 50 years on both of those facilities, and a lot of it's just Band-Aid approach. We do not have a consolidated DPW facility. It's on paper only. They operate as silos. They need to be in one building, new construction that brings in modern Public Works operations management and, and equipment maintenance capabilities. We don't have it. So I encourage you to take the well-water and the DPW study, move them to the spring, but bring the water pipe and the sidewalk studies to the forefront this fall because they're more, there's more synergy between those two. With regard to doing it faster, my impression was, and I know Vin's on the call, Vin had asked for copies of the 2010 and 2011 studies that were done. I don't know if he ever got them. He's entitled to them. Hopefully, with your help and your partnership with him, you can get him in to see the documents to understand, as I understand, those reports tell you that certain water pipes need to be replaced.
Yes.
They do not identify what neighborhoods and what streets need to be replaced. I have no idea how DPW says next year, the year after, and the year after, we'll be doing these streets or these miles of pipe. I don't know what the selective criteria is. Furthermore, the residents don't understand that. That's a master plan, if there is one, that should be available. The study, to my thinking, will bring clarity to what that plan is. What pipes need to be replaced? What are the most pressing, to Tina's point, what are the most urgently needed areas of town that need that solution? In my conversations with Sean, I've made this point many times to the finance committee as well. Optimally speaking, we can do three miles a year. And in so doing, we'll achieve a pretty quick, relatively quick replacement of all of the asbestos-containing material pipes that are in the ground in Holliston right now within a 20-year period, optimistically. I understand when we did our debt model, you were on the finance committee at the time, some of these numbers get big quickly if you, if you seek to put them out over 20 years. They can box out a lot of other municipal priorities, including the high school. I understand that. So I'm hoping that with your help, help of Vince or anyone else who's going to join your efforts, that you can bring forth some kind of a plan that gives us some flexibility to move and to achieve some gain on this. Because this board has been looking for some cooperation and some breakthrough with the finance committee specifically for the last two years. I'm looking forward to some positive things at this fall town meeting to get a couple of these studies going so that we can understand what's ahead of us and how do we get there, okay?
Yeah, no, absolutely. And the only, so I think, just two other things, I hear, I hear what you're saying. And I mean, I do understand these are priorities, and I do want to, I want to make sure I do it the right way. And the one, I mean, one of the things, thinking about the pipes and sidewalks and finding synergies between the efforts in the studies, it's probably, could be, you know, could be argued that they'd be doing a lot, they could be doing the same things at the same time, and the studies could be less expensive in effect because they're looking at basically the same pieces of real estate at the same time. And making sure that we have that, it's not just a study on what's in the ground, but here's, here's also the plan on how to replace it and when to replace it. And then the second, the last thing I'll say too, is that I think one of the things that we need to get to, and this is a bigger conversation, and it goes to a couple of the conversations we've already had, is putting more capital investment into the omnibus, into our operating budget. And making sure that we are investing enough in our infrastructure within operations, if it's the water, water pipes, I mean, the Water Enterprise Fund and not. But, but it's also to make sure that we're trying to do these kinds of efforts without having to take debt exclusions to make them happen, so that we were working within the budget, and then we can be having some flexibility within that. Because I'm making it up that if, you know, as one facility, as some of the bonding goes down, we're doing more water pipe replacement, we could be doing some different kinds of things. So I think that's why I want to have a larger conversation about a capital plan, so.
Mr. Murphy, you have some comments to make on this discussion?
Yes, I do. I want to say I do have the water studies, two, but they're actually two studies, one being the whole water asset management plan, which includes all the aquifers and pumping stations and things like that, and then a water asset replacement plan, which is basically the pipes. I have scanned and copied both. I have shared copies with Travis and Ben--
Yes.
--of the water replacement study. It's very in-depth. It gives you a streetlight straight and gives you all the pipes and can't really figure out where certain pipes are, but it gives you color-coded pictures and things like that. So the question is, how do we use that and do we really need to have a water replacement study? It looks like this is all done, we just need to get it all updated. And I don't know what DPW has or has not done, so that's a question we were going to have this coming Wednesday, I believe.
Thank you, Vin. Appreciate it. Any other comments on this topic?
Uh, no, I don't have anything else.
Tina?
It's late. I do have a comment. Boy, it's the mother and me coming out here. We're talking about studies, we're talking about what we have, what we want and all that. So Vin's sharing what he's got from, you're mentioning that we have a 2000 and whatever study. In the end, what we want is the funding scenario by which we fund a capital improvement plan by which we get to a three-mile-a-year replacement that is synergistic with increasing sidewalks. That is the end goal.
Right.
We, I mean, we can kick around the idea of studies, but if someone thinks we have the studies, then use them.
Yeah.
Use them to get to a point where we have a capital improvement plan that has a three-year water main replacement with complementary sidewalks. If they don't serve that purpose, then we need to go the route of a study.
Pretty straightforward.
So--
Could I ask for a consensus?
Moms, go to bed.
With Ben spearheading our efforts this fall to focus on any number of article, articles, in this case, topics, any objection to the water pipe replacement with sidewalk in the fall, facility and well-water study in the spring? Is that sensible to you?
Yeah, I mean--
Okay. You all right with that?
I'm okay with it, but I would actually even argue that we could, we should do the well-water now and the sourcing now. I don't, I don't even see a reason why we should wait on that one.
Well, your earlier remark about diminishing runway, if you have the capacity--
I think that's an easier lift. I think that's an easy lift. I think we can do that. And then the DPW in the spring.
Report back. What's your, what's your expected timeframe?
Well, we're having a meeting on Wednesday. Let's see, I mean, I would say, I should be able, can I give you an update like in two weeks?
Two weeks, sounds great, yeah. Could you kindly put it on the agenda for two weeks and we'll--
We can talk about updates, and then if, you know, if there's anything else further that we have to continue on, then we should have, we'll have some, we'll have a pretty good understanding, at least at that point, where we're going to stand.
Ben, I'd like to thank Vin for your help on this. I know he's been active in this space for the last couple of years.
Vin, thank you for sending the study. I did forget to say that.
And scanning it.
Well, yeah. Scanning it, yes.
So let's scan.
So thanks for your help on that. We'll look forward to your report in a couple of weeks.
Yes.
Thank you, Ben. We're going to move on to the next item on our warrant, excuse me, on our agenda, it's getting late.
Yep.
The open special town meeting warrant for October 26, 2020. Mr. Ahern, I believe this is simply a vote of the board to do so.
This would be a vote of the board. I would just give you a quick update on the timeline, just so you understand from just so you understand. From last year, the warrant was opened on August 14 through September 12 for an October 28, 2019 town meeting. This year, we are talking about opening this evening. I would let everybody know as of tomorrow, and keeping it open through October 1, 2020, at 4:00 p.m. A little bit closer to town meeting, give people a little bit more time, leading up to October 26, which is the current assumption. And as I mentioned before, sort of that's been expressed to some people, like the CPC, who have some meetings to have, but obviously, everybody will be notified as of tomorrow if we vote to open it tonight.
I know folks have their eyes on the state legislature, as we have since May. I reached out to State Rep. Carolyn Dykemode to find out if she'd be interested in joining us sometime in late September with any updates from Beacon Hill on the progress for an FY21 GAA. She'd be more than happy to do so. So I think the timeline of closing this on around October 1 would be opportunistic with possibly having her to give us an update on where things stand. We can then start to make some judgment calls on whether or not this timing is working for us, all things considered. So I'll entertain a motion to open the special town meeting warrant for October 26, 2020. So moved. Do I have a second?
Second, after we vote, to ask Chief Cassie a question, but yes, second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You have your vote, Mr. Ahern.
Excellent. Thank you.
Let me ask Chief Cassie a quick question. You had, two weeks ago or so, asked... Talked to us about quorum changes.
Yes.
I'm going to assume you did not speak up, so this timeline works for meeting any requirements we would have to request, any reduction in quorum.
Very much so.
Okay.
Just one point to that. If the date were to change from October 26 for any reason, we would, after this close of October 1, be able to reopen the warrant, let's say, if we're moved to a following month, right? We could reopen the warrant if there was any need for that. So just because it was... It will be closed on October 1 doesn't mean if there were a delay that we couldn't reopen it.
I'd ask the clerk, if you have it, I have it up, to read the press release associated with this opening, now that we are open, Ben.
Sure.
Want me to hand it to you?
No, I got it. I got it right here. Thank you.
Just so folks at home understand what this means.
All right. So the Select Board Open Special Town Meeting Warrant. The Select Board Monday evening voted to open the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on Monday, October 26, 2020. Articles are to be submitted to the Office of the Board of Selectmen by Thursday, October 1, 2020, by 4:00 p.m. Any questions about how to submit an article for consideration should be directed to Travis Ahern, Town Administrator. That should say Select Board, not Board of Selectmen.
He caught that.
It's tough. You gotta catch them all.
And this information will be posted on the town website. It'll be posted at the senior center, the police station, which I still think is closed, actually.
The lobby is open.
The lobby is open. Okay. The fire station, town hall, it'll be posted at HCAT, Metro West Daily News, and the Holliston Reporter.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Ben.
Sure.
We'll move on to the next item of business, which is board business, to approve the meeting minutes of July 13, 2020.
Move to approve those meeting minutes on July... Of July?
13.
13, 2020.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That carries. Move to appointments... Appointments to the stipend subcommittee. I believe we have two this evening. Is that correct, Mr. Ahern?
That is correct.
Ms. Erica Plunkett and Mr. Daniel Why Not.
Why Not. I like that last name.
Yes, sir. We have both their letters of interest and some CVs to look at. If anybody wants to discuss these, otherwise I'll take a motion to appoint Ms. Plunkett and Mr. Why Not to the stipend committee.
I'll make that motion to appoint Erica Plunkett and Daniel Why Not to the stipend subcommittee.
Do I have a second?
Second, and as always, with a thank you to those two individuals for volunteering.
Okay, that's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Ahern, I believe that will give you... Or give this committee a quorum to begin meeting with one more vacancy. Is that correct?
We do. So if anybody's interested, we have one more seat on this for the five-member committee to research and report back on stipends. As a sales pitch, I'll say, for anybody looking at this as a short-term commitment, which some people enjoy, the deliverables due at the end of the calendar year, we have one more seat. But with the vote tonight, with the quorum, I will start to put these individuals in touch. They can obviously begin to discuss scheduling. So I will put them all in touch now that there are four seated members.
That's great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is to update the liaison list. I note in our packet, you've added some contact information, the finance committee, the select board, for all the various forms of government, all on one page, very nicely done. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about the liaison list as it is published?
I'll just make one point. So the... What we're looking for tonight, and you can choose two or not two, there are three that have been added to this list that were not on the previous Word document. Now it's, obviously, it has the contact information. So sustainability, which did not previously exist, now exists, and Ms. Zimer from the finance committee has been selected as that liaison. The next one is the Community Farm Advisory. I actually sat down with Christine Westland, and I think there are some things that may be of financial nature coming up in the next few years, certainly. And the finance committee has placed Sooners Sessian there, so we could also vote somebody from the select board. And then the town hall septicage is something that's coming up soon, and Michelle Zimer was voted the liaison there from the finance committee, if we'd like to place a select board liaison as well.
Three openings. Any hands want to go up for those vacancies? Mr. Sparrow, Ms. Hyne?
Well, you have seniority, so you get first.
There you go.
First dibs.
I am torn between sustainability and community farm advisory. I feel like I have a very good relationship communicating with Matt, so I'm going to put myself in with the community farm advisory, because, yeah, I think that's...
Okay.
Give someone else the opportunity.
Yeah, I'd like to be the liaison to sustainability for a year.
That worked out well.
I'll do the septicage.
Gotcha.
Speaking of seniority.
Insert joke here. With all the people watching, leave it alone. So that's how it rolls.
You sling it, you...
That's how it rolls. Do you like that, chief? Do you like that? All right. So I don't think you need a vote on liaisons. I would ask you to post it to the Selectmen's website so that people can use it as a reference, okay?
Great.
Thank you. We have a gift to the senior center from the Tiberio Charitable Foundation. Will the clerk please read the amount, please?
Sure. So I'll read the acceptance form. It is from the Joseph W. and Faith K. Tiberio Charitable Foundation. The purpose is for the continuation of the good work for the seniors of Holliston, for the senior center, and it is for $500 to the gift revolving fund.
I'll take a motion to accept the $500,000. Excuse me.
Whoa.
$500 for the senior center? That's right.
Move to accept $500 from the Tiberio Charitable Foundation to the senior center.
Do I have a second?
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Thank you. Other business, Mr. Sparrow?
I have no other business.
Ms. Hyne?
None.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn at this...
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That concludes our meeting for this evening, just shy of 10:00 p.m. Thank you for joining us. We'll catch you next week. Good night.
Good night.